Here we go. It is 2:09 PM on this Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees and say Happy New Year, because we are in a new year for fiscal and school year standards. So, welcome everyone. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Trustee Hall?
Present.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Diane Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Clerk Woodley, here. All present accounted for, madam.
Wonderful, thank you. So, something you're going to hear us talk about a little bit later is balanced governance and the model that we follow here at the board, and we have a new friend with us today in this room, and she is Dr. Kristen Miles. Will you please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the refuge of suchness for all.
Thank you, Dr. Miles. That closes item 1.03 and brings us now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nukmu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nukwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 in Section 1 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 2, our consent agenda items. Prior to this meeting, we did have notice that one trustee is pulling item 2.05, so I will ask staff to prepare for that. And I have not received notice that any other trustee would like to pull any of the other items. Seeing no lights on group, that means that we will be discussing items 2.02 to 2.04 and then 2.06 to 2.30. Yes. So, in this point, before we do public comment, this is when trustees can share just general comments or thoughts about any of the items that are not being pulled individually. I have a couple. For item 2.04, this is the item that contemplates providing the funding to communities and schools, and I just want to show my thanks to that organization, to the legislature for the funding. Senate Majority Leader Nicole Canizaro did carry that bill, and now the entire state benefits from additional services from communities and schools, and that includes the Washoe County School District. And I do want to share that thanks to all of this work, community and schools will now be in four additional schools, so there's growth. Rita Cannon Elementary, Cold Springs Middle School, and Lou Mendive Middle School, and William O'Brien Middle School. So, just thank you so much for that. So, I really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to make that statement on the record. And then the other statement I wanted to make is for item 2.06. I do this every quarter. These are the reports of the average daily attendance and then the variances that are requested for the ratios. And I never miss an opportunity to explain to the public or anyone that's here is that while we have ratios set in law here in Nevada, we do not fund to that ratio. And so, that is the fundamental reason why we have to submit these variances every three months. And so, that's something that I always ask that our state legislators and the citizens in Nevada give some thought to, to actually funding to the class ratios that are set by law. So, those are just two comments that I had on any other items. Did any other trustees want to make a comment on any of the items together in consent? Trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. I too wanted to comment on 2.04 and 2.06 also. The 2.04, and I'll speak more to this in my board reports, but the communities and school, I believe there's 24 school sites now, and I think the public needs to know how much this organization does for our children. And then essentially, it's helping our families also. They provide recess activities, food, clothing, food and clothing pantries, and it's nice where kids can go and feel like they have access to things that they truly need. And I just want to say thank you very much and how much I appreciate what communities and school does for our children. And then on 2.06, I want to ditto what President Smith said. I mean, we keep saying this over and over again, that they are not funding to the true value dollar amount that needs to be funded per child, but I do want to say that I appreciate the district leadership and the board for shining a light on it. It keeps being brought up that we have to think of other ways on how to counteract that so that every child gets what they deserve in education. And for the most part, we've been pretty successful thinking out of the box on how to service all of the children, even though the state is not funding us what is needed per child. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Westlake. JJ, do we have any public comments for item 2.02 to 2.04 and then 2.06 to 2.30?
Pablo Navaduran for item 2.03.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello. Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navaduran, and I checked the board, the mini-report on minutes. They say like I will propose to send a student from Smith Street Elementary School to Von Mills School. That inaccurately, I do support sending those kids to Von Mills School, not, I might talk about to Worcester High School, not Von Mills School. And then, I do not believe the, in another quote, I do not believe New Mills School have a woman numbers needed to provide students with full range of elective course offerings. So, that true, because if you have more kids, the more kids, the more left that we got. So, that one true. And it create that the major elementary school should be a tenured zone for deployment of school, but now inaccurately, because Smith Street Elementary School was zoned for Pine, so they removed to Von Mills School, Pine closing. So, that went inaccurately. So, I did not say send students to the poly, because that will be overcrowded. So, so, and then, Smith Street should be the tenured zone for the mine watch high school. That one true. And then the Heartbaker, Spade, Winnie Hill, true. So, leave it as so. Let's change that, to change that language, to I support moving to Von Mills School and propose to Worcester High School. And then, if, if Smith Street wanted to eliminate for fear of a middle school in the near future, probably they should, we, we think about the PK to A school if a student were mature enough to handle what the behavior is, because I know, I know Von will, will have a positive culture change. So, so do I. So, I think my know him need to have a positive culture change before we could support him to PK to A school. So, so that PK to A school at Pine campus could be, could be zoned for the mine watch high school. So, keep in mind. So, thank you.
And Mr. Navaduran, that was for item 2.03?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you so much. And colleagues, I have, when we get to this part after the next public comment, or if we have another one, I'll explain what Chief Legal Counsel and I were just talking about here in a minute.
Stephen Dudley for consent agenda item 2.16.
Welcome, Mr. Dudley. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Board members, thank you for inviting us into your house to speak today. For the record, my name is Stephen Dudley, Stephen with a V, D U D L E Y. I'm a member of the, I'm a representative for the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters here in Nevada. I'm actually located in Las Vegas, so don't hold that against me. But I came here today to speak. I saw a lot of, you got construction on here, some upgrades and things, and we think that that's great. There is a large, large need all across this country for apprenticeship-ready young people to look at the trades. So, I come up here today to speak about, in Southern Nevada, we partnered with Clark County School District over the past four years, and that four years' time, we've brought in over 30 young people, literally, the day after they graduate, to join the carpenters' union and have them working on projects all around Southern Nevada. All the contractors that I've spoke to in Southern Nevada, the first words out of their mouth, I bring up, or we have internship programs that we bring, we bring a design-build, which is going to be a large event in Southern Nevada, where our schools are going to participate with 20-plus students per school, building houses, building sheds, things like that. And our contractor partners say, are you in Northern Nevada? We have an office in Northern Nevada. I need this direct line of workers here. My colleague here, Jesse, will speak on that here in a second. But what I'm discussing is our Career Connections Program. It is a program that we offer to high schools, along with ourselves as representatives, to talk to students, take them on tours of our job sites, get them to meet contractors. I have a meeting tomorrow with the state apprenticeship director over our internship program, and we're going to leave some business cards, some literature. We would really love to discuss this. There's a very, I can't even describe the amount of need. In Las Vegas, we imagine this time next year, we're going to be around 900 workers short on some of our projects, and you have more work up here. You have bridges, schools, mines, there's things going on, data centers, that we need a pipeline of young people ready, gear-minded to go to work, and that's what our Career Connections Program brings. So, I'll leave some business cards, some literature. Again, thank you for your time letting us come up here and speak about this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dudley. Well, I have a little bit of an update for you, because we also got an email from Mr. Garibay yesterday on this, and I, you know, we've been at it all day, and I haven't gotten the chance to email back, but we are introducing you, perhaps, or Mr. Garibay, to Dr. Josh Hartzog, who's actually our Director of Career and Technical Education. He is waving his hand in the back, and we are ready to make that connection.
That's great. Thank you.
You're very, that is how responsive we are here at the Washoe County School District. There you go. See how fast that public comment went to action? There you go. Not real action, though. Not real action.
Jesus Garibay for item 2.16.
Hi, Mr. Garibay. There you are. Hi, good to see you again.
Great, great. Thank you all for having us here. Appreciate it. For the record, my name is Jesus Garibay. I'm a business agent with local 971 carpenters here in Reno. I'm also the president's local. I'm the political deputy, and I'm also the Career Connections Outreach Specialist. And as you all know, Northern Nevada is booming in the next decade. In the next decade, growth will double the size of Washoe County and surrounding areas. There's so much growth that every trade is shorthanded. The local doesn't have the manpower for these upcoming and ongoing projects, which is why the council and the local are reaching out to Northern Nevada's next generation of carpenters by attending local school district career fairs, giving in-classroom presentations to students in CTE construction classes, speaking to students in JAG programs, and putting some of these graduates to work. But it's obvious that there needs to be a pre-apprenticeship program so that these students can get the experience and knowledge on how to handle a power tool, team building, working on in-classroom projects, and camaraderie, which is why the council and the local is trying to partner up with surrounding school districts with the council's Career Connections curriculum. As you already know, the local has about 200 carpenters working right now on the new Vaughn Middle School and the new Silver Dollar Elementary School out in the North Valleys. There are also new buildings and additions at UNR. The local has also infrastructure work going on at the moment where about 100 carpenters are working right now on I-80, I-395, and the Pyramid Highway project. The Arlington Street Bridge is getting replaced. And after that project, the city is going to say, to have the Sierra Street and Keystone Bridges replaced also. The Grand Sierra Resort is also breaking ground next month with their new parking garage and arena. The local will have about 200 carpenters alone on that project. We also have the Reno Tahoe Airport, which is also about to break, break ground on a new parking garage and terminal. That six-year project will employ about 250 carpenters alone. The local has solar panel projects coming up in Yarrington, Wadsworth, Soda Springs. And those projects will also need about another couple hundred carpenters on that project. The local also has the lithium mine project out in Thacker Pass. Casinos are having work left and right. And who can forget USA Parkway, where the local has about 400 members alone working on different projects and data centers. Wow, the curriculum. This curriculum will help train the next generation of tradespeople with great jobs, wages, and benefits. You can combine this curriculum also with the MC3 curriculum and help these students that are not college-bound to get a great job and career in the construction industry. And I guess my time is up now. Thank you all for your, your time.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. I have these pamphlets here.
Thank you very much, President Garibay, right? Am I saying, I'm saying your last name correct, right? Well, thank you very much, President Garibay. And again, Dr. Josh Hartzog is right back there. And don't forget, we also have Construction Career Day coming up on September 26th. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Very good. All right. So I'm going to bring it back here. I was just speaking with our Chief Legal Counsel because again, we did have some public comment with a request to adjust the record as it related to the accuracy of some statements in the minutes. So make sure, I want to make sure I do this correct. But what a motion could look like if someone goes as moved? It would be I move to approve items 2.02 to 2.04 and 2.06 to 2.30 with amendments to item 2.03 as described by Mr. Navaduran, reflecting the accuracy of his statements.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. Clerk Woodley had his light on, so I'm going to give it to Clerk Woodley. We have a motion and we have a second by Trustee Westlake. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you so much, colleagues. We'll now go to the one item that we will be pulling. This is item 2.05. This is the award of bid 25-111-B-05-D-A, mechanical upgrades at Jerry Whitehead Elementary School to Raymond Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $4,257,616. This is an item for possible action. And we welcome up our Chief Facilities Officer, Tammy Zimmerman. Welcome.
Thank you, President Smith. So as you stated, this is for the cooling systems to be replaced at Jerry Whitehead. We've done that at the other pods. This is our last pod-type school for that. But it is solely for the purposes of cooling. And the cooling system and the heating system are two separate systems. There is a boiler out there. So we're currently, as of yesterday, we're starting to investigate what an icing issue may be with that. Is it the condensate drains? Are the roof drains plugged? And we're working with the SFCs and the Maintenance Department to determine what that is and to correct that.
Since this was your item to pull, I'll let you ask your questions.
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. And just to clarify, and I hope that I'm paying attention on other agenda items where this comes up for other schools because I just don't want to see us not moving forward intentionally. Although I trust you guys, I just know that the heating system, with the water coming down and making sheets of ice in the winter from the, the heating unit, has been a real concern of the constituents over there at Jerry Whitehead. But then I started thinking also, I thought in the, in the, in the improvements and the FMP, maybe the FMP at Jerry Whitehead, were we going to look at some kind of subterranean heating thing? I thought that was in part of Jerry Whitehead.
So with Jerry Whitehead, it would, it's in the FMP for, for upgrades and modernizations. But you could be talking about the capital renewal plan. And I can go back and look at that to see what might be slated for that. But we're not, we would be looking at our traditional types of systems because we want the same types of systems throughout the district because we know how to maintain those. A one-off is very different and very hard to maintain and to train our staff to keep that up. So we would be looking at consistent systems across the district. So subterranean doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I thought I saw geothermal.
Geothermal. So we have ground source heat pumps at some of our new schools. We could look at that depending on what we could do with the modernization in the future. But that's not on this, that's not on the scale or schedule for right now.
Okay. Do you, do you think, Ms. Tammy, that the heating thing will be addressed before this next winter to avoid? I'm just worried about a kid slipping and cracking their head.
That's what we're out there doing right now is to get that taken care of before we have icing conditions. Because with that happening with the condensate drains on the roof, checking those roof drains to make sure they're not plugged and that they're working as intended before winter gets here and we have any of those issues.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. I'll bring it back here because the first step before we make this happen is to pay for it. So, Trustee Westlake, would you like to make the motion?
Make the motion to award the bid 25-111-B-05-D-A to, for mechanical upgrades at Jerry Whitehead Elementary School to Raymond Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $4,257,616.
That's okay. You can do it. All right. I have a motion by Trustee Westlake. I have a second by Clerk Woodley. They are the super duo, at least for these first two. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. And thank you so much, Chief Zimmerman. That closes item 2.05 and closes Section 2 in its entirety. And we will move on now to Section 3, our Items for Presentation, Discussion, Information, and/or Action. Beginning with item 3.01. This is the Presentation, Discussion, and Review of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees Balanced Governance Self-Assessment, facilitated by Dr. Thomas Alsbury, including a review of areas of growth, opportunity, and effectiveness of the trustees. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we also have Dr. Kristen Miles with us, who just did the pledge for us. So, welcome to both of you.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, we wanted to congratulate the Washoe Board, President Smith, in their endeavor to conduct a very in-depth board evaluation. This evaluation, it is research-supported, of course, but it is unique. Understand that most boards do not evaluate themselves in this intense of a manner that includes observations of your board meetings from external experts as well as self-assessments and even self-reflection elements. It involves individual coaching elements as well for each of the trustees where they have the self-reflection on their own practice and goals for improvement into the future. So it's quite involved. And the board looks at over 81 different indicators to evaluate, evaluate themselves on. And so I just congratulate the board first for your willingness to engage in an evaluation of this complexity and this comprehensive nature. It shows that you're really trying to find ways that you can improve in any way that you can. So with that, let's take a look at some of the results that we, we found. So as I alluded to, there are three parts to this evaluation. The first part is looking at the board meetings themselves. Dr. Miles and I independently observed these meetings. In the end, we, we observed all 17 of the meetings for this school year, the regular board meetings, analyzing those meetings with a pause button. So you can imagine, we've looked at every second of your meetings, of your 17 meetings. And, and then we collect data and analyze that against national best practices data that we've collected in, in the national studies that I've conducted and that Dr. Miles has most recently conducted in a state-level study. In addition to that, we have a, an assessment of standards, a set of 12 standards that the most effective boards engage in, they're focused upon. And then in addition to that, a series of what we call individual trustee practices. And these practices are, they are exemplary of board members individually. So this is a unique piece to the evaluation where we have been able to assess nationally what the most effective board members do individually. And you've evaluated yourselves and uniquely, you have evaluated each other. So it's a very unique evaluation process where you not only say, here's how I think I'm doing, but you open yourself up to allow each of your colleagues on the board to also evaluate you. And this, this, again, I believe is really an exemplary practice where you're open to others' viewpoints of yourself in addition to your own view of yourself.
Dr. Alsbury, can you just take one very brief moment and explain to the public that's following the work of balanced governance, like a rough number of the total number of districts, nations? Because it's not just the US. Can you just give a tiny bit of a flavor so people understand the true expansiveness of this data-focused process?
Yeah. So the balanced governance is unique in that it's the only governance model today in existence that emanates directly from research by professors at Division One universities. I, I was part of that and, and part of the team of researchers that began that research over 25 years ago. Unfortunately, there's quite a disconnection between academia, the university world of research, and actual practitioners like yourselves on boards. That's none of your fault. Part of it is that our findings are frequently published in academic journals that the general public never see, don't even have access to, and are not written in an accessible fashion. So the whole model and the evaluation is part of that has been developed from that, those studies. Now, as that was introduced for the first time in a readable document, an accessible document through a book in 2015 that I published, many districts across the country and internationally caught an interest in balanced governance. And since that time, since 2015, I've worked with over 80 districts across the United States and a number of them internationally as well. It's my understanding that balanced governance is considered now one of the premier growing evaluation or, excuse me, governance models in the country. Dr. Miles has actually affiliated with the Oregon School Board Association who uses balanced governance statewide. That is the model that they use with all their district training. And the Nevada Association has taken a great interest as well in this model. And there are several other states, two other states that currently use it as their model, their delivery model. It's been, was interesting to me, you don't know this, President Smith, but just a week ago, I was notified by several professors who are younger than, than I am. I'm more on the retirement end of things. But there, I'm really excited because they're up-and-coming professors. They are in research universities across the country. There are five professors and they are committed to continuing the research on boards, board governance. And I was contacted because they are doing a study right now comparing three of the most popularly-used governance models. And balanced governance was one of them. I didn't know that. I was just as surprised as anybody when they called and they're going to be doing a comparative analysis between the three models. So I'm excited to see what their findings are as well. All right. So as mentioned, this is a very comprehensive. We're going to take a look at the first section. And I'm going to be much briefer in the board meeting tonight. These materials are available to the public. When we observe, when Dr. Miles and I observe the, the board meetings, and we do that through the taped, videotaped meetings or digitally taped meetings. I'm showing my age videotape, right? Digitally accessed. We look at these factors that you see on the screen right now. We look at the length of the meetings. Highly effective board meetings last around four hours long on average. Less, ineffective board meetings are either really short or really long. The short board meetings are what we call rubber stamp boards, who just make motions and approve everything. They don't really discuss things. They don't take seriously their responsibility of oversight. Really long meetings come from boards that are in, in, getting deep into operations and management minutia discussions. They usually, these boards' meetings last very long, six or seven hours each. But yet amazingly, they don't actually discuss the things that matter to move the needle forward with student performance. So in the, in Washoe, your board was averaged just shy, you can see 3.95 hours per meeting. The other number that's up there with the arrows, that shows the, the Washoe Board did this evaluation two years ago in 2023. And that shows what the, the meetings were at that point. They were 3.25. So the additional time that's in the meetings are for two reasons. One was because of an addition to focus, a commitment to focus on strategic goals, which is exactly what the board needed to do. That was the recommendation two years ago. So I was happy to see that the board made that commitment. So you added to your oversight role, which caused the meeting to be a little bit longer. The other thing, though, that caused it was you were dealing with some real issues with budget and so forth this year, as many districts across the country have experienced. And so the board has to pivot and spend additional time on those budget matters, which you did rightly. So that's a high, we rate you as highly effective when comparing you against other boards. Just a reminder and note that we conducted the only national studies ever conducted on boards. And therefore, we have the data where we can compare you and how you do things to boards that have been shown to be highly effective versus boards that are not as effective. And so the rating of highly effective, that's where it comes from. A comparison of these other boards, this other data to what you're doing. So. The next one is the number of topics that you cover. We gave you a rating of highly effective. Most effective boards, they deal with substantive issues that, particularly tracking the progress on strategic goals. And around four is about as much as you should try to tackle in one particular, one single board meeting. That's what we see boards do. You can see that that's, you're right there at four. And that's up from 3.7. Item typeology, we're looking at the seventy percent is the magic number. The most effective boards, if they're perfect, are spending about seventy percent of their time receiving data that shows the board how you're progressing as a district on strategic goal initiatives and then discussing that data. And you're doing that sixty-five point five percent of the time. And that's highly effective. That matches with highly effective boards. The next one is direct versus supportive topics have to do with what you're focusing on in terms of topics in the board agendas that have the most impact on student performance. And you're doing that at a developing level. The same with goal monitoring and management and the final item as well. We believe that the board is is on track. They're doing their job really well. We we put you at developing to effective. Again, you've been diverted a little bit from your focus on monitoring strategic goals because of the extensive amount of time you needed to spend on your facilities work and your budget work. And so within the context of what you've had to deal with this last year, we think that you've done a very good job and give you that effective rating. The second part, so that was the first part of the evaluation based on those observations. We do those observations independently, Dr. Miles and I. We don't talk with each other. And then after the after we've done those observations and we've analyzed the data that we then come together to compare to make sure there's inner rate of reliability on that analysis. The next one is an is a survey that goes to each of the trustees where they rate how they're doing in terms of eighty-one different indicators that we find in highly effective boards. So how did Washoe do? Well, first, this is a scale that's used. And so the numbers that you see up there, if a board member rates themselves as highly effective in one of these eighty-one areas, they would get a score of three. Since there's seven board members, the highest absolute score you could get is twenty-one if all of you rated yourself as highly effective. And so the numbers go from there. Effective is worth two points for each trustee, one point for developing, zero points for ineffective. When we look at the 2023 year, over all twelve of the standards, all eighty-one of the indicators, the board scored at an eleven point seven. You can see up there, that's just a smidge above developing, but we'd put that really in the developing area. In 2025, the board was rated at a fifteen, which you see is well into the effective range. And so we rated the board as effective. And this, by the way, it's hard to move the needle on these things. These evaluations are done individually and privately by the trustees. You're not you're not having a discussion about them. You're privately making these marks and then sending them back to us for our calculations. And so to have scores go up this dramatically is very significant. And it speaks to what we saw when we observed you as a board as well, that that in there are many, many ways and many examples of how this board has made great strides since 2023. So there's a huge congratulations to this board for that. The next way is to tease this out a little bit more, and that is I mentioned that there's eighty-one indicators. And so you can see that the the board was rated as effective in all twelve of the standards. They rated as highly effective in eight of the eighty-one indicators. It's it's difficult to get a highly effective rating from this device or this instrument. It's designed that way. We don't just give away As, okay? There's no great inflation here. So it's very tough to do. And you but you managed to reach that in eight of the eighty-one indicators. So we're being tough on you. You're being tough on yourselves. In 2023, only one reached that. So it's still a vast improvement. It's an eight times, really, if you think of it that way, of improvement over 2023. In effective, you see that you were rated at seventy. This is significant, seventy of the eighty-one indicators that we see in highly effective boards, you reached that effective goal this year in that. So eighty-six percent of our indicators you reached as effective. In 2023, you can see only thirty-seven of the eighty-one you reached effective rating. And so you see what I mean by this being a very dramatic movement forward to the effective range. Developing, of course, there were forty-three. You were working on getting better in forty-three areas. Now you you just have three to work on. So you again, I'm repeating myself, but you see how dramatic this change was. And then none of the areas we felt were ineffective.
Dr. Ellsbury, can we stay on this slide for just a second? This is incredible. It really is. We would be remiss to not take a moment. So this board and this district and and all the trustees who have served have made a commitment to do our very best. We expect our kids and our educators to show up every day to do their best, and the seven people sitting here at this dais should be giving their very best, too. And so these indicators and this improvement is not just the talk of wanting to be better, but this is the work of being better and having it backed up by actual data and formal analysis. And this is really a moment to show appreciation to all the colleagues that sit here at this dais, to the community who put us in these seats. This is your work, and this is your celebration and accomplishment as well. And so I just wanted to take a moment and and of course, to acknowledge that we have an incredible new leader with Mr. Joe Ernst as our superintendent of schools and really the work that we're doing overall. This is the proof that we're not just saying we're going to get the work done. We're not just promising we're going to get the work done. We are getting the work done here in the Washoe County School District. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's exactly right. And and I'll add to that, there's a number of districts. I I think the the success that Washoe has shown with the with their your willingness to commit, you understand that this model is very demanding. It's not just a wink and a promise. It's that's why I keep mentioning about how intense of this evaluation is. You've made a commitment, all of you, everybody on the board, to move forward with this, and it shows. And so there's a reason why the Nevada Association is now interested in this model because of you, frankly. They see what it's done to to assist you as a board to move forward. And a number of other districts that I'm working with now, brand new this year in Nevada, that's part of the reason why they're on board, because they they talk about you when I meet with them, and they look to you as an example. So you should be very proud of that. Congratulations.
Okay, I will take over. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Happy to be here. So I'm going to talk a little bit about your specific areas of strength. I'll just go through a few of these that you identified. All in all, over all the standards, the highest rating standards that you gave yourselves were standard one, vision-directed planning. So that's really developing a community-related vision for what you want for your students. Where do we see our students? How do we build that vision in collaboration with our superintendent, in collaboration with our community? Where do we want to go? And and that was one of the highest areas of strength that that you found. And the other one was community engagement, and this is not easy. And you gave yourselves a high rating there, which means that you have done the work. You have done the work to build that relationship with community. And a lot of boards are really hard on themselves with this one. It doesn't mean that the work is done, but it means that you recognize and you've gotten feedback from the community that you've done that work and that you continue to do that work. So to dive a little bit deeper into just a few of these high-scoring indicators within those standards, standard one indicator four, the board regularly monitors the progress of strategic goals focused on improving student learning. So this is one of the most important things that you can do, monitoring the progress of your strategic goals. So you've got your plan. If the board is not monitoring the progress of strategic goals, it's not doing its job, right? The district is doing the work, but it's the board's job to monitor that progress. And when you are doing that, you are keeping the promise to that vision. You are looking at successes. You are looking at areas of improvement, and you are diving in and saying, how can we support? What can we do? What is our role in this? And so by having that strength, you are keeping that focus on students. You are keeping that focus on what you want for your students, your community, and you're doing, you're fulfilling that vision and that work of the board. Standard two indicator four, the board is responsive and respectful to community inquiry and feedback. And so this one is is really important, especially as you go about developing that vision and collaborating with your community in fulfilling that promise to monitor your strategic goals and and in working with your community. And this is about more than just push-out communication, but this is about pulling in. This is about meeting community members where they are. This is about getting multiple perspectives. This is about reaching out into community and also showing that you are taking community feedback into consideration in a genuine and authentic way before you're making decisions and not just saying, we hear you, but having already a decided response. But you are making decisions and letting that community feedback influence your decisions before making them. And then the next one, trustees are visible in the community. And I have watched your board meetings. I have seen you give your board updates and reports, and you are definitely visible in your community. I have seen where you have gone out and you appear at events and you appear at schools. And it's so important in a larger district like this. I come I come from Oregon, where we have one hundred and ninety-seven school districts, and most of them are very small. It's it's so important that you are part of your community and that you care about getting out there, and you've rated yourself high because you know that you are that you are part of your community, you care about what's going on in your schools, you want to be known and visible in your community. And this is such an important thing, that that your community knows who you are and what you do and what your contributions are to the district and in pursuing that vision that you've promised to fulfill.
The third part of the evaluation involves, I mentioned it a little earlier, you rating yourselves on personal practice and each other. This is an example of that. It creates a scatter plot graph that you see here. If each trustee rates themselves and each other, and every one of you does that, then that's forty-nine data points that we would receive, where you've really evaluated yourselves individually, but we can see the data summarily, as you can see here. So we're looking for trends. There are ten different practices that we found in the highest performing boards. This is one of them that you scored very well on, and it is having to do with not being a board that's micromanaging, which would be an overreach board, that'd be the right side of this graph, or being a board that's disengaged, that's sometimes called a rubber stamp board. So what we found was that that boards that live in those extremes are not very effective, but boards that have a balance between them and engage in what we've been talking about all night, which is being informed and then using that information to have oversight of progress on the goals that you say are important for kids, that if you're doing that, if your your role that you play is that role and not other roles that many board members play, political roles and and the like, we find those boards to be the most effective because they're here for the right reasons. They're here for the kids, for the schools, to just make the system better. That's the point. That's why why you're here. And you do that very, very well. So this is rated as a highly effective. You can see how the numbers are right there in the center where they're supposed to be. I'm going to go past a few of these slides because we don't need to do do all the details that we did earlier. I wanted to note also that in comparing the results from 2023, there's something called data spread. We saw an awful lot of that in 2023. And that that's a situation where in these indicators, the board was rating them, board members were rating themselves all over the place. One trustee would say, in this area, we're doing exceptionally good, highly effective. Another other board members are saying, we're terrible, we're horrible, we're totally ineffective, and then all over the place. When we see that kind of data, it's really troubling because it means that the board's not working together as a team. They don't have a common understanding of the category or of what they're about or what they're trying to focus on and do. And that that doesn't bode well for the results. One of the really significant changes from the 2023 findings and this 2025 evaluation was that we just saw virtually no, that I think there was one item out of the eighty-one that there was some spread to, and I think that was a misunderstanding of the question in the instrument. But we just didn't see that. So this board has come together in a really powerful way, and that's what this shows us. So spread data grade. And then also significant movement forward improvements in standards one, two, four, five, and eleven out of the twelve in very significant ways. I'm going to flip by a whole bunch of slides, so just bear with me. To this one. So in the end, there's some recommendations that we offered to the board, Dr. Miles and I are offering to the board. That is to continue to focus on the things that we've talked about tonight. That is to continue to agendize your strategic goals, continue to have reports brought to you as a board that answer the question on are we making progress on our strategic goals? That the board would spend the majority of their their board meeting time focused on discussions around that issue and that they make decisions that that coalesce around the things that make student learning move forward. And so the board is doing a good job of that, but that's our recommendation that you continue. These two things that you see on the screen are are ongoing recommendations for moving forward. So understand that you've you've made some great achievements as a board, but we are relentless in our desire to make you as perfect as humanly possible. And so we get really nitpicky right about now. And so even though public facing, I think you you're doing so many things right, there's some internal adjustments that I think need to be made in terms of just some communications and some procedures. Board members asking for information and information sharing that would be kind of behind the scenes when reports are received, getting clarifications on information in a way that makes the board meetings go work efficiently, brings out things that are important to bring out in the public meetings, but also doesn't end up in these marathon meetings, right? And so there's things like that. I also think there's more work to be done in terms of the the superintendent's leadership team and them getting an opportunity to ask questions about how does this governance process work? How does it impact us? How do we relate to the board, communicate with the board, et cetera, in our day-to-day practices? And it's that's gone well, but I think there's some areas to improve that you you indicated as a group. And so I'm recommending some additional kind of advanced leadership training for the district leadership executive team, and then also for us to be available for just-in-time coaching. There's been a few situations that have risen during the course of the year, and we just want to make ourselves more available to you than we have in the past. We've always scheduled these big kind of day-long training sessions and things, but we have not had the capacity. I was by myself, number one, and and my position has changed a little bit as I've moved more into retirement. And also, Dr. Miles coming alongside me is going to allow us to be more available for what I call just-in-time coaching intervention. So when there's questions about practice, are we doing this like like we should according to the data, you can contact us immediately and ask us that question. We can have that conversation right at the time. We don't have to let things wait for weeks and weeks and weeks until the next time you see us. So those are our primary recommendations. And I'm just for the sake of time, there's a lot more. It's a over a hundred-page evaluation document, by the way. We're obviously not going to go into all that, but I'm going to stop there. Any questions? Any questions that you have?
All right. I don't see any lights on, so we will just say thank you so very much for this. We appreciate your guidance. We are learning just as much as anyone else is. And that should be the key takeaway. We're a learning organization. And that is not just our youngest learners that are coming through the door in pre-K. That's all the way up to the elected officials that sit at this dais. We are a learning organization and we continue to be better. And thank you so much for taking the time to coach us and to allow us to be better for our children and our community. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other lights on, so we will go ahead and close item 3.01. But don't go too far because we will now open item 3.02. This is the presentation and discussion to provide training on the superintendent performance evaluation process for Superintendent Joe Ernst for the 2024-25 school year, scheduled to occur in October 2025. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And again, we have Dr. Alsberry and Dr. Miles.
Thank you very much. So we just wanted to bring this before the community. We've done this before. And it's just a good reminder. Similar to the board evaluation, your superintendent has made a commitment. And this is through our research. The research covers boards and superintendents as well. And for those of you that don't know, that you may not know, there's many superintendent evaluations are pretty short and sweet and generic. And there are things like, how has the superintendent done in leadership? A, highly effective. B, you get what I'm saying. The challenge with those, they're quick, that's true, but they don't give much guidance or direction to the superintendent on what exactly or specifically is going on. And plus, they're kind of general in terms of what they're looking at. They're looking at things like leadership. Certainly important, but how do you define that? The balanced governance is a much more in-depth evaluation model. And specifically, it focuses laser-like on the strategic goals. So we actually, year by year, each year, we take the district strategic goals that the board and superintendent together have agreed are the most critical areas to focus in on. The board selected six of those areas this year for this evaluation for the superintendent to focus on. Now, the superintendent's focusing on many more than six, but they wanted to have a special focus and commit the evaluation to those six most important areas. So what this evaluation does, we create the evaluation tool to specifically allow the board of trustees to evaluate how has the superintendent done in advancing progress on those specifically selected strategic goals. So you can see what I mean. They're specific to Washoe. They're specific to your strategic plan. They're your goals. They're your indicators. It's not a generic, how is he in leadership? Kind of a question. So it's very different. It's very unique, and it's frankly very challenging. Some superintendents would shy away from this kind of an evaluation for fear because they're actually holding themselves accountable to moving forward with student learning and performance. And so first, I want to congratulate Superintendent Ernst for his willingness to, you know, be evaluated in this kind of an intense way by the board. So that says a lot. This model is also unique in that it's not a gotcha kind of a model. The entire design of it is to help the superintendent evaluate how things have gone and to focus on very specific areas of growth. So the growth mindset, this is a continual learning type of an evaluation.
And just to look at the cycle, this is a year-long cycle. Once you end one, you end the evaluation. The next one begins. So the first piece is you adopt the process and the criteria for the evaluation. So you're looking at, how are we going to begin? What is the tool we're going to use? Clarity is the most important thing and having common expectations so that the board comes to agreement and understands what's going to be done. Your superintendent understands what's going to be done because it is a year-long process, and you want everybody on the same page. So when you get to the end of the cycle, everybody has a common understanding. The next piece is to decide on the focus and goals and performance indicators. So again, you know what you're going to be evaluating. And all year long, your superintendent knows what's going to be evaluated as well. The mid-year performance review and any revision. So you're looking at mid-year meeting, talking about those goals and performance indicators. It's important to have that mid-year review so that you're not getting to the end of the cycle. There are no surprises. We don't want any surprises in this piece. So you're looking at, does anything need to be adjusted? How is everything going? In a really honest, candid conversation because you've got that collaborative relationship. And then you're submitting your final progress on performance indicators. So you're starting to gather data, to look at coming together. That evaluation summation progress is next. So you're putting together everything that's going to come, that your superintendent's going to look at, that you're going to develop that one voice evaluation because the superintendent doesn't have seven individual bosses. All of you together form one collective, and you're going to have that one voice evaluation. And then in the end, you've got your final evaluation report that is presented and approved.
So in looking at and just keeping everybody up to speed and the community on this process, as Dr. Miles points out, a year-long process. Already, the board, in the fall of 2024, adopted this procedure and this process. They made a decision on their strategic goals and their performance indicators. February 11th of 2025, the board and superintendent engaged in a mid-year performance review and at the same time, did some more work on their strategic goal selection for next year. So the areas of focus for the superintendent have already been selected for next year's evaluation as well. This gives the superintendent plenty of time to gear up his organization and get it ready to collect the type of data that the board has identified they want to see next year. And so that's already in place. That's a really important point, a criteria, a unique criteria about this superintendent evaluation. It's not an autopsy at the end. It's ongoing, as Dr. Miles said. And it also pre-plans in advance, so you don't throw challenges to superintendents after they're already into the year, and they don't even have a chance to make the changes they need to make to have success. The next steps, we are about to wind up or wrap up this 25-26 evaluation. The way that works is that the superintendent will provide any final data information on or around August 29th to the board. That information has been coming to the board, though I just want to point out that you've been receiving data on strategic goal progress all year in every one of these board meetings. So none of this is going to be new or surprising. The board has tracked this all year. But it does give just a final opportunity for the superintendent to share any final pieces of data that need to be shared before the board actually makes their ratings of the superintendent.
So clarification, I believe, for the public, because I think I understand it, but this final evaluation process, because we've already done the mid-year, is for 24-25 school year, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go through that. The finalization of this process will happen in October of 2025. We'll deliver the final evaluation for the superintendent, for board's consideration and possible acceptance, approval. This process, as I mentioned, August 29th will begin with the submission of any final data to the board. Next, the trustees will, immediately after that, the day after that, trustees will receive an evaluation tool. This gives them the opportunity to give a rating of the superintendent on each of the areas that the board has selected for the superintendent to focus in on, the six in this case. After, the board members will be given several weeks, two weeks specifically, to complete that individual evaluation. And they'll do that individually and independently. Dr. Miles and I will offer assistance to each of the board members individually if they have any questions about filling out that document and specific to writing of recommendations. So we ask the board to rate the superintendent, but in addition to that, we ask each of the trustees to provide any areas of growth that they are recommending for the superintendent. And so that's included in there. After they complete that and send it back, we'll compile those ratings. And we'll also take a second step because frequently, when we ask trustees, as you can imagine, there's six different goals that you've asked the superintendent to focus on. It's not uncommon for each of the board members to maybe give one or two suggestions for growth on each of those. So let's do the math, okay? It's not uncommon to get 50, 60, 70, maybe even 80 recommendations for growth. That's way too many. No human can do that. And so we need to figure this out. Plus, remember, even though we want everybody's voice to be heard here, there are occasions where individual board members might think the superintendent needs to make improvement in an area where the rest of the board don't agree. And so the way that we get past this, seven evaluations, which might contradict each other, and we get from that to one evaluation, that's a clear consensus, is by compiling all of those recommendations for growth, sending them back out again. And that's what you see in October. Compile all those recommendations. List them anonymously so you're not making decisions based on each other, what you think of each other. It's just, the idea's going to stand or fall on its own merit. And so you then are asked to rate the items that you believe should be included in that superintendent's evaluation. We then receive that back from you, again, two weeks later, and we'll compile that together to get to six to seven areas of improvement that the board is recommending as a group. That final report will be put together and sometime early October, second week of October, somewhere around in there, we'll contact President Smith and Superintendent Ernst. We'll show the results of superintendent's evaluation to him in a private setting, a private meeting. We, one thing we believe in strongly in balanced governance is we're not going to show up at a board meeting and surprise the superintendent, who's never seen their evaluation before. I don't think anybody would suggest that is a fair process. So the superintendent gets a chance to see it. Immediately after that meeting, the same day frequently, I will send that final report out to the board members, and it will also then be posted out as is appropriate by state statute. At that time, everybody will have plenty of time to take a look at it, see it. And then it will be brought before a public board meeting, I believe on October the 28th. And I will be here. And Dr. Miles may or may not be able to make it, but at least I will be here and I'll be presenting the report to the board for consideration. There's only one other thing. Just, this was figured out prior by the board, but in case the public are ever wondering, this is a rating sheet. So the rating goes that if the superintendent has been highly effective, that they'll receive a rating between 3.6 and 4. So 4 is the highest rating that a board member can give. So each of the board members will have given their rating. If they rated it 4, or excuse me, highly effective, that's a 4. So if every board member said highly effective, then the superintendent, you would add those up, divide by seven of you, and that would come out to 4.0. So that's how we get to this, but it's good to show the public this is where the breakpoints are, the numerical breakpoints and the words. The words highly effective, effective, developing and effective. Those are taken directly from the same breakpoints and language that's used in the evaluation of administrators in the Washoe District. And so just to be fair and consistent, we're using the same breakpoints and the same words to evaluate the superintendent. So that concludes an overview of the process.
Thank you. I don't see any lights on, so I will say thank you so much for that overview. More to come with the community. So you'll see that coming to a meeting in October. And thank you so much, Dr. Miles, Dr. Alsberry, for all that you do for our community and this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, team, that closes item 3.02 and moves us on now to item 3.03. This is the discussion and possible action to change the current format of board reports to allow for more reporting and shared information, such as removing the three-minute time limit, allowing reports related to trustees' service on other external organizations, creating an agenda item on a topic to allow trustees to share more than three minutes of information. This is an item for possible action. I am your presenter on it, so bear with me a moment here while I pull up the board report. And then we're going to go in the way, way back machine. So a couple of things, just to provide some information about the role of the meeting manager and what it is that we do here. So technically, the agenda creation is something that is the responsibility of the board president. That's the meeting manager, often in partnership with the superintendent. And that does mean that the meeting manager or the board president can make certain decisions around the agenda. In this case, I'm not going to do that. So board reports and how we handle board reports is, in my mind, something that's really important for our group to discuss together. One of the responsibilities that I have as a meeting manager, but all meeting managers do, all presidents, is to notice when certain topics are coming up in conversation. And that's exactly what's happening here. So in this case, we just talked about balanced governance. And one of those principles is power with rather than power over. So rather than just making a unilateral change, this is something we're going to talk about as a group. And honestly, my own personal mind is very open to it. A good meeting manager listens when there are multiple people that have questions or it comes up, why do we do it this way? When's the last time we made a change? I think maybe another format may be better. And that's exactly why we're bringing this item forward. So for a little bit of history, going back to 2021, and Dr. Nicolette and I were the only two trustees on the board at this time for what I'm about to describe. But board reports were a discussion back in those days. They were also taken from the agenda. That was a unilateral movement that was made. They were actually removed for various reasons, and I am not questioning the logic or the authority of the meeting manager at the time that did it. What we did do as a board was actually agendize it, just like we're doing right now. Rather than one person making a decision, it was agendized for discussion, and a majority vote of the board did choose to keep board reports on the agenda. And as a matter of fact, the president at the time was also a voting member of that majority as well to keep board reports on. And the format that we follow right now is we have board reports at the end of the meeting, and we have a three-minute time limit. and we have a three-minute time limit. So before I turn this over to the colleagues to talk about this, we, well, we, I, reached out to the Nevada Association of School Boards, and three of our members on our board serve in some role with NASB, that's Dr. Nicolette, Vice President Mayberry, and Trustee Westlake. And I engaged the Nevada Association of School Boards with just some fact-finding. That does not at all mean we have to do it like they do it, but when we talk about board reports and what other boards are doing, it's good to just simply factually understand what other boards do. So what we learned with that, and I also asked the other local governments that we had, is we did find that only two other districts have a time limit on their board reports. That's Humboldt County and Clark County are the only two other districts that impose a limit, and they follow the same model as we do, which is a three-minute limit. The rest of the districts do not have a time limit. However, all of their board reports do include the same topics that we do, including some of the areas that we've shown interest in, about what if you have more to report about your service in an external organization? How do you do that? So they do take the time that they need, but they don't feel that it's treated excessively overall. And we can read that, and the public can read that in the supporting documentation that's here. I also did research and spoke with members of the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the Washoe County Commission. They also do board reports very similar to ours. They do not have three-minute limits. So again, just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that one is better or not, but factually and objectively, we should have an understanding about how the other governing bodies in the state do handle it. And then something to also talk about is that any decision we make today, whether we make a change or not, can also be a pilot. I want to remind everybody that we don't have to commit to anything in the long run. We can always make a decision that we decide to check back in on, just like we're doing with cell phones later today. We could make a change if we were so inclined, and do that for the first half of this year, and then revisit it to see how it played out in practice. So with that said, we'll go ahead and open up this discussion. I know that we've got several of us that serve on external organizations, whether that's the debt commission, the NIAA, NASB. I serve on the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board. And it has felt to many of us, and it's come up, that it feels like a race to the finish with the three minutes. But again, those three minutes are a self-imposed limitation, although for good reason. We, of course, did get feedback from our chief legal counsel about some of the vulnerabilities when board reports go on too long, and wanting to make sure that we always stay on the right side of the open meeting law. So with that, I will pause on this, because I know that this is something that's come up among many of us, and I'm hoping we can engage in dialogue and see where things go from here.
Thanks, President Smith. I'll open it up. Three minutes is just not long enough for me to talk, but I've become a very good speed talker. But that being said, I do feel rushed, and I think it's important for the community to see, as a trustee, what we're doing, so that we're held accountable, that we are going into schools, that we are accessible and understand what is happening in our community out in the schools and at other events, and to support our partners. So of course, I want to share that. But then there's the other, where being a part of NASB, Nevada Association of School Boards, I don't even have time to talk about things like that, and I'm just going to take this opportunity, a little, I know, you're looking at me, but just a teeny leeway. There's things that are important to share regarding NASB to educate our community, so that they can be better community members, knowing how they can advocate for our students, for our teachers, just knowledge in general. I mean, there was a great paper that just came out, and they were talking about children that have shown to have dyslexia end up in the penal, a lot, not all, but a lot end up in the penal system. That's important to know. And those are things that I would love to share as a NASB member, not just to educate my other board members, but educate our community. We are all in this together, and the more we can support each other and lift each other up, I mean, we're going to be the better for it. But if there's not time to share those things, that's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. I have a quick question on what Trustee Westlake just brought up. So all of us sit on other boards and commissions, and almost all of us, okay, well, many of us do. And so that is part of the role, and so that's, we are serving on behalf of the school district in those. Could we separate the report of that? So say when Alex goes to an NIAA meeting, that's information for all, and he's serving as our representative. That's not part of his individual trustee report. So is it an option for us to perhaps separate those things? And then that would not require us to speed through our three minutes, and our three minutes would be about what we individually did as far as school visits, things like that. Perhaps maybe if we pull those apart, maybe that's a compromise where we're not spending, because by the time we get to the end of the meetings, let's be honest, if we were taking six, seven, 10 minutes, that's a whole nother hour potentially. And so if it's really important information, then that's probably something that should be agendized, and that way, we're doing it in the right way and following open meeting law, because often there may be attachments and things that could be shared. And I'm just using NIAA as an example, because Alex recently had an update on something. And so that was kind of my thought was, that's where we're running out of time, so perhaps we need to just pull those apart.
Yeah, so the short answer is yes and yes. And I'll say why that's yes and yes. One of the options we could consider is leaving our individual trustee board reports right the way they are at three minutes, and we could create a second kind of board report that is exclusive to external services in those organizations. Now, mind you, that's why the other boards in Nevada don't have the three minutes, because they roll it in. But we can separate that out. We also have a recommendation from our chief legal counsel to agendize those conversations. And so we could fully agendize that. Something to think about with that is that the time limits that you would have to know in advance, the details, and I would only want to make sure that that does not turn into like very, very frequent freewheeling conversations, because we just got guidance that we want to stay on instructional topics and less so. So there are different ways that different districts manage that, but both of those options are on the table, including taking the pilot approach with either of those. Dr. Nicolette?
Thank you. The agendize idea is where I really landed when I gave a lot of thought to this and reviewed some other documents and practices from not only Nevada but other areas. It also provides us an opportunity for controlled discussion, because there are certainly times when I have a question, but during board reports, that is not the time. Again, I say controlled, monitor our own behavior. And then, and I would say that, for me personally, a person who can pontificate and love to share the things that I'm doing, and sometimes things I'm not doing, three minutes is a gift to not only me, but everybody else listening. So I lean toward the three-minute and the thought of agendizing important. The thing that I can't reconcile yet, and that would be for discussion, is how is it agendized? What would the obligation be? What kind of information must we focus on? There'd need to be some guidance in that.
Thank you. And I'm sure our chief legal counsel can join in. That's an important thing. So, because I have also thought about all of these extensively. And as a reminder, we serve on behalf of our board. These would not be action items, so we would not be telling, for example, Clerk Woodley, what he should be doing on the NIAA. We have to refrain from that. These would be items for presentation, because we all serve in our autonomous capacity on behalf of the board. And this would also be work for the trustees to work with staff, fully agendize this. And I'm going to be very honest, as a meeting manager, we got marching orders to focus even more on direct instructional topics. So this is where the balance between a different type of board report versus agendized item, and I think they both very much have merit. But yes, that would be work on our behalf, working with staff well in advance, and then also staying on that agenda, but being disciplined so that we don't start telling one of our colleagues what it is they should be doing. Remember, we have already given that authority to our colleague by a majority board vote at the start of each year. So all of these definitely have merit, but hopefully that answers a little bit of the question, that what we would have to accept as our responsibility in the event that we move in that direction. Was that kind of right?
I, yes, I think what you have to be concerned with is transparency to the public who put you in the position. So, you know, I always used to teach the open meeting law course back in the day, and what I would always say is, knowledge is power. So you should give the community knowledge of what you're doing. So to keep beating non-Trustee Woodley for a minute, if I may, talking about NIAA, it's my recommendation, because you might have families out there who are interested in NIAA, I would imagine there's quite a few. It would be my recommendation that you would have an agenda item that says, presentation and discussion, which would allow you guys to discuss, as long as we're specific enough, presentation and discussion, not action, you can just discuss it. NIAA meeting from, let's pretend, July 1, related to transgender participation in sports. That's a hot topic. This way, as a member of the public, if I have a transgender daughter, then I might want to show up and hear what he has to say. But if you just put on the agenda, NIAA report, how is that fair to me as a parent? And that's my concern with, and that's why the AG advises against board reports or cautions against board report. I don't want to go into my opinion too much, because it's attorney-client privilege, but since I was asked the question, that's my, that is the safest way to comply with the open meeting law, is just put in a little extra effort and agendize it so members of the public can show up. Agendize it with specificity.
Well, I wasn't thinking about that particular topic, but I was thinking about lacrosse through the legislative session, and I know that Alex had several updates on that. And so for him to just do it during his board report, the families that really wanted to be a part of it had no idea when he was going to talk about that. So I also really caution us to give ourselves more time than that three minutes, because it would be really easy for us to go into other topics that should be agendized. And so I, we do a really good job of being transparent, open with our community, and so I'm really uncertain of giving ourselves more time. I would be more in line to, I serve on the debt commission, committee or whatever it's called, there's very few updates that I would need to give to the board. But if one of the cities or entities was asking for a bond, and it related to maybe like the streets in front of one of our schools, I would want to agendize that and have, you know, Tammy or somebody else help with that presentation, because I think that would be really important, but it's not necessary for me to report it every single time. So that, I don't know that we're going to be excessively adding agenda items, but I think when there's a really important one, it's valuable for the community to be able to have input, and if we're just throwing it out during our board report, they won't know that we're doing it.
So, thank you. You know, I love our meetings, as crazy as this sounds. I might need my head examined, but I do like coming here, and we talk about a variety of really fascinating things. Budget issue, academic performance, talk about our setbacks. So I truly do love coming and serving this capacity. And I think, you know, I appreciate the desire for all of our colleagues to share what they're doing in the community with these board reports. Our meetings are, in my opinion, too long, and I'm really worried about the unintended consequences of removing a three-minute limit, notwithstanding the OCG opinion and the Attorney General's opinion. I do think committee reports, NIAA, debt service commission, I do think you can prioritize and keep that within your three minutes. I don't think we need another agenda item. If it's something that's important enough, yeah, certainly we should agendize it. Means our meetings rarely end by 6 o'clock. Again, they're just borderline too long. I mean, I think any human being is sort of, begins to lose attention, begins to lose focus. And we have, I want to see our staff get home, we have police officers that are here until the last car, and the parking lot leaves. I think at times it's a little disingenuous that our meetings last as long as they do. We all want to get home to our families and our loved ones. We do have a current, strong meeting manager, and I appreciate that, but that may not always be the case, and I'm really concerned about the precedent that it will set. And I think there are ways to streamline our meetings, I think, and I've talked to the superintendent about it. I mean, when I see a PowerPoint presentation that's 50 pages, I begin to build a little anxiety, because I know that a lot of us are going to begin to tune out, as with the public. I think you should think about who's watching these board reports at the end of the meeting. Look at YouTube. How many people are really tuned in? We're talking single digits, and I guarantee half those people are in this building, waiting for this meeting to end. So I appreciate the desire for my colleagues to talk about their school visits. You know, you can submit things to the record. If there's a controversial issue, if there's something that, you know, Trustee Woodley or President Smith want to talk about in their respective, you know, the planning commission, NIAA, or the debt service commission, you could always submit that to the board in an email. If we feel that we need to agendize it, the president and the vice president should work together and put that on the item, so they're on the agenda. So I just don't, you know, this has never been a problem to me, folks. I mean, three minutes, there's seven of us, that's 21 minutes, not including the superintendent and the student representative where we go, 30 minutes, 30 minutes more of a meeting, when we can have our staff home and, you know, we can move on with our lives. So respectfully, I'm, I don't, I won't support this, nor will I support putting a new item on the agenda for committee reports, respectfully, but I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why we have to have these conversations and decide for ourselves, because we're the only ones that can decide how we want to do this. That's why we're doing this conversation right now. Clerk Woodley, I saw you late on.
Okay, thank you. I have some input on this, especially as a former executive staff that used to do staff I know for a fact that from staff's perspective, there's no such thing as an eight-hour day when you have a meeting, a board meeting. It's a 10-hour to 12-hour day, period. I know that from experience. Even prior, when I had to do staff reports, those were 10-hour days doing the staff reports. So I have a lot of empathy for the staff time. I have to make reference to the previous presentation that we had from Dr. Ellsbury, where we identified and we all saw that our meeting times went from 3.2 hours to an average of 3.9 hours. And that in and of itself means that our meetings from 2023 has increased by half an hour on average. I like to be efficient with my time. That is a big concern of mine, is if we were to do anything on our agenda that could create more time on the meeting. I have a fellow board member here that takes an hour drive home. I would hate for us to have a long meeting, have an additional 30 minutes added to that, and then he has to drive an hour extra just to get home. I know some of us have another meeting after this meeting, and maybe I'm biased today because it's been a long day for me, because we were here at 0900 today. So I really have concern with our meetings extending the amount of time that we spend, period. I don't mind serving. I love serving. I've been serving on many different boards, but I do love my time with my family, and I do love to be efficient with my time. So if we can do the reports, whether it's electronically, or, I'm willing to add a minute, but I wouldn't mind if we also, I can negotiate, and we can get rid of the BLT meeting, and not have a meeting after this meeting, and add a minute or two to the board reports. But I do believe that we all have to identify our priorities when we give any reports. So whether it's three minutes, five minutes, eight minutes, regardless of that timeline, we're going to have to prioritize what it is we're going to share, because I'm sure we can easily share half an hour at times. I don't know that, since most of those other meetings that we had, that we're part of, they're quarterly, so I don't know that we need every month to provide this update. So that's something to consider. But I'm all about being as efficient as possible with our time. So, thank you.
About the three minutes, our board reports, I really like it, because it mirrors what the public also is allotted, and I think that's respectful, and I'd like to maintain that. And to Trustee Woodley's points, the quarterly is very interesting to me. Thank you for sharing that thought. And here's a question. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I don't want to assume. If we were to do quarterly other duties as assigned reports, then the public comment to any of that would be at the end, because it's not an action item, correct? It would be at the end. Thank you.
I'm going to go to public comment, and then we'll come back and continue the conversation. Is that, do you want to go now, Trustee Finnick, or?
Pablo Navadurán.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurán.
Hello. Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navadurán, and I do support removing the three-minute time limit for school board, but maintaining three minutes for public comments, but adding public comment to the beginning of a meeting, let's be back to public comment beginning of a meeting, since like Drew Rebar talked a support about it in early January. So hit the rules. So if you spoke on public comment on the beginning of a meeting, you don't get a chance to, you don't get a second chance to get it on public comment. you could don't get a chance to, you don't get a second chance to get it on public comment in the meeting because I know a little bit concerned about the public comment, add to public comment beginning and because that would encourage the, the resident to speak up and add more, more time, more many hours to the meeting. So there are no such thing and as you wise, as really because there are no eight hour board meeting or 10 hour, 12 hour meeting. The meeting is depend how many time it is. You got to work together. If we work together more, the less meeting will ends early. That the, that the point, so. And, uh, for example, we saw one trustee who, who drive one hour from a board to the school board meeting, which is JJ Phoenix, so he live on Pyramid Highway, Pyramid Lake area. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back here. Oh, I'm sorry, JJ, I apologize.
The board received an email from Lori Casimir.
Thank you. Trustee Phoenix.
So just to weigh in on this with everyone, uh, the, uh, when, when it came out, I had thought a lot about what, what do you guys practice? And, and being a new person coming in, it's like, why are you even doing this? How important is it? And, uh, to, uh, the balanced governance training that we received, you know, it's really shows that our demonstration, uh, involving with community engagement. You know, we're involved, we're, we're, we're bringing back and we're, we're telling, uh, what we're up to and telling our, our report. I think the three limit is a good cap. Otherwise, we could continue to go on and on and on and, uh, you know, I like to get it right to the point and just kind of get right to it so that at least we're heard and that statement is made. The other was, uh, just looking at some options, uh, that maybe. I know he had gave us a good background about, uh, what, uh, has been done in the past and what's, uh, legal and things like that. The other was, uh, maybe pilot an idea, you know, that we see where it goes. But as far as the options, you know, maybe if it's that important to, uh, an item that's as needed. So we don't always have to have it every month or it's on, on the agenda. You know, maybe as needed, just like the legislative stuff that you're doing, that might be important or incident occurs out in the community that maybe we want to let the public know that, uh, we do hear, have heard what has gone on and that we are talking about it. It's not just going unheard. Because I think I heard something in some of the training that we had. If you don't say anything at all, you know, it could be going this way. But if you're saying too much, it can go that way. Again, we just want to be right in the middle to let the public know as well as ourselves. We are thinking about that and we're talking about it. So I don't know if it could go on a consent agenda if you wanted to put it out there. So maybe if I read it ahead of time, I know I want to show up to the meeting, maybe I want to comment about it. Maybe it has to get legally reviewed before it gets put out. So it's, uh, right there where it needs to be and not just publicly made a comment. We might make an error like that. So that's just another idea. The other is just agendizing those things. And then, um, you know, the, the, the big thing to take away from me, it goes back to that we are strategically looking at the performance. Uh, these, these comments are related to that. It's not just related to, this is what I think or this is what we should do. It really goes back to what is the performance for our students and our strategic plan. And if we stick to that and use that as a guideline, because I think Diane had mentioned that, that we're using that as our framework, then we can stay on point. Otherwise, we're just going to kind of go here and there and we will tolerate letting them talk a little bit and then we might have to ring them back in. But I really like to keep that, that, that criteria, maybe something that's, uh, formatted out where we're, we're staying right on point. So, uh, in the end, uh, I, I think that, uh, we really got to look at that as far as, uh, if we're going to do anything, whatever your vote may be on this today. So I just want to make sure I weigh in on that so I'm heard. Because a lot of times often the colleagues think or maybe the public, I don't always have something to say, but believe me, I have lots. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really, that's really great. So, um, for anybody who's watching along or out there today, just as a reminder, uh, due to Nevada's open meeting law, we cannot have these conversations anytime but in this room. So while you're watching us self-determine our governance, you might be wondering why in the world is this agendized? And that is because we cannot legally ever learn each other's opinions on this unless we agendize it. And that's why it's agendized today. We may or may not make a change. We may reaffirm what we're doing now, but there is no way for us to know where we land on it unless we agendize it and we talk about it. So that's what you're seeing happen in real time right now. Uh, trustee Westlake and then Vice President Mayberry. And then we'll see if we're kind of galvanizing around something because we have like, uh, eight or nine other items for this meeting.
Thank you, President Smith. The only reason I'm wanting to talk again is because an idea popped into my head and I do not think we should go more than three minutes. I was joking when I said speed talking and all of that. But what about a hybrid? If it's on the agenda, then there has to be discussion which can even draw it out. But if there's something that we would love for our other board members to hear, the public to hear, if we let, uh, BLT or superintendent know that there's something I, this is what I would like to share, share with everyone, having to do with NASB. And it's regarding, um, detecting issues in children that can affect their performance outcomes. And also reference, submit a letter to go into the record and reference. If you go online, there, there was the document that pertains to this and it's in the record. So we don't have to go on and on and on. So it would be like we're asking for a leeway of four minutes, but we have to run it by superintendent or BLT, whatever's decided. And this is the specific thing that we want to mention. And the document, supportive document or the supportive meeting that they can reference for NIAA is on the record and on the website. And therefore it still has to get cleared. It's not an agenda where there's a huge discussion. It's just getting information out, bringing the community in, letting our trustees know. Kind of, i- it's a hybrid.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just be real brief again. You know, I, I just think we should be looking at ways to, to streamline our meetings, not, not lengthen them. And I'm certainly open to the notion of if a trustee who serves on one of the public bodies, you know, has a report to give maybe once, twice a year, they can certainly request that on the agenda. I'll, I'll leave that as something on the table too. Thank you.
Actually, that's the perfect segue to our chief legal counsel.
So, so, um, I don't know, the board doesn't necessarily need to, uh, vote on this item. You can always vote to continue it. You could vote to affirm that you like the three minutes. You could do any of that, but that's, um, currently as we exist right now and as our board policy state, if you look at board policy 9110, a member can request an agenda item. So again, to continue picking on my favorite guy and his awesome white coat, trustee Woodley, if trustee Woodley was like, hey, I have an important issue for children, he could ask the board president to put that on the agenda and he could come in and talk about that item uh, as it relates to NIAA, to go back to that example. So, uh, we already are set up for that. And as you know, uh, and, um, again, without going into too many details from my memo, the three minutes was created by the former board president, as President Smith said. So you could affirm that three minutes if you wanted to take a vote on that or you could just defer a vote on this altogether. It's not required. Uh, I only share that because President Smith asked me to, number one. And number two, it sounded like that's where the board was kind of headed. So I just throw that out there that our policies already cover, uh, that solution.
Yeah, so, um, to just to, just to recap that, we could vote as a board to affirm, which would create a record for future boards. I will tell you, I went back to that October meeting in 2021. I read the staff report. I watched the meeting and I reminded myself, even though I was in the room, why the board made the decision it did. That was very helpful for me. So I would personally lean towards wanting to affirm what we're doing because we're making a record for future boards to think, why did they do it that way? What did they discuss? Because I will tell you that that record in 2021 was helpful in the creation of today. But we can also just, just close the item as well too. So I will leave that up to the pleasure of the board. But just remember, we're not just doing this for ourselves. We're also creating records for future board members in the, in the future. But both are equally suitable for me.
Well, then I move that we keep the three minute board report and follow the current board policy that if somebody, uh, one of us has something that we'd like to share with the public and the board, that we request an agenda item. Did I get that good?
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion to affirm the current process by trustee Hall and a second by trustee Phoenix. Seeing no likes on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to one. Thank you so much, colleagues. This was a really productive conversation. I appreciate it. So that's going to close item 3.03 and we are going to go ahead and move forward with item 3.04. The reason is, is that the remainder of the items are all very similar, um, in their core. So let's go ahead and open item 3.04. This is the presentation discussion and possible action to approve the plan to conclude pilot phase and launch full-scale implementation of the phone away and learn today for managing personal electronic devices in schools and classrooms in the Washoe County School District pursuant to Nevada revised statute 392 dash, uh, dot 4637. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today our area superintendent, Chris Hackbush. And as a little bit of a preview, after this item, we will go ahead and take our break. Welcome, area superintendent.
Good afternoon, uh, Board of Trustees, President Smith and Superintendent Ernst. For the record, Chris Hackbush, area superintendent. I'm here to present on an update, uh, for the plan to reduce cell phone use during instructional time. Uh, I want to give a shout out to both Chief Ngotti and Director of Research Laura Davidson on this presentation. Okay, so for today's update, uh, updating on Senate Bill 444, which revises provisions concerning governing the use of certain electronic devices in schools and its impact on the Washoe County School District Administrative Regulation 5810. We're going to review data on schools' intended policies, needs and monitoring plans and describe a plan for future, of the future of phone away learn today. Here's a quick rundown of our timeline up to this point. Since last we met, uh, we did a principal, a set of principal surveys to get some feedback from our site leadership. We also took a deep dive and crosswalked the Senate Bill 444 after it was passed with our administrative reg 5810. We were pleasantly happy and surprised to see that the work in the collaboration of our district and our board, uh, having a pilot policy aligned very tightly to the Senate Bill 444. So this kind of breaks down what, what that's about. Again, you can kind of see there, but basically it comes down to us, uh, working on our regulation, uh, currently, uh, to update on some of the exception language that occurs with cell phone use in the classroom. And that can be from, um, special education standpoint. It can be from the health and 504 plan perspective and also emergency situations. Okay. So some of the feedback from our site leadership, um, at the end of the year, uh, we, we had, uh, 21 principals give us some feedback on how it went in having a pilot policy mid-year and some of the reflections there. Principals report plans to monitor their cell phone rules in various ways in the upcoming year to through teacher monitoring, use in the classrooms, tracking infraction data, in infinite campus and conducting walkthroughs and checking in with teachers via surveys and, uh, and so on. I think the key part here is that we can have a strong start with this policy at the beginning of the year. As a, as a classroom teacher in the past and as a disciplinarian in a school for many years, I can tell you that, um, starting the year with the expectations really sets a tone. And we can align a lot of the work that we learned from, from the past semester, all the work we did with the pilot. And we have a, we have a real strong start coming, uh, with our policy. The community knows about it. Our teachers have been able to wrap their heads around it. We have been able to have time to really digest it over the summer. And it also gives us the information, um, to communicate and come up with professional development plans and enhance some of the, uh, supports that we had in play with the pilot. Should be noted that principals did not request many additional supports. And if you remember prior to the pilot beginning, we had a lot of schools and I will speak, uh, mostly to the middle schools, had really tight policies already in place when we went into the pilot. However, uh, again, time is on our side when we walked into the summer after doing our pilot that, uh, principals were able to kind of plan, um, and, and prepare for this. They asked for certain supports at the district level, which are outlined here. Um, and a lot of it was around like just clarification on the smartwatches, which we see in elementary level and making sure that's getting included in, in our, uh, language with the policy. And again, if you remember when we rolled this out, our initial plan was to use the January professional development days to build capacity with our site level, uh, leadership and with their teams of teachers, right? Because this is happening in the classroom level. Um, and because of the smoke days that we, we didn't have that professional development. So some schools could fit it in if it worked out with their, um, regular schedules with staff, but oftentimes not. But it should be noted that the, um, social emotional learning, um, resources that we provided to schools, uh, they were used 50%, uh, 53% of, of our schools use them. And 100% of those schools agreed that they were very useful lessons, um, on self-regulation and building capacity with our students. So, um, again, this allowed, uh, having the summer teachers being able to kind of, again, digest some of these resources and we, and allow us to plan ahead for a strong start. Okay, so if we look at the final steps before a, uh, full launch, we're revising the regulation so that it is tightly aligned with SB 444. We're going to update and we have been updating our, uh, district staff and student handbooks, which has been work already that's been, uh, done. Update behavior matrix, uh, with the progressive discipline language from SB 444. And that's important because, um, alignment everywhere, right? And then calibrate with staff on data entry and technology violations to begin day one of the school year, which will give us better data that we can analyze throughout the year. And then the communication piece is very important. I think how we communicate, um, I think if we, if we end up passing this for this year, um, having a strong communication plan is, is ready to go. So again, us getting to our sites, um, having them send out their communications, our district communications and everything is aligned. And again, I'll repeat like I did in the spring, this is one of the first times as a, as an organization this big in our district that we're doing a full-fledged PBIS, positive behavior support, district right in every building. And so this is a, a great opportunity for us and we're prepared. And that, that makes us all feel a lot better. So with that, uh, superintendent recommendation to go beyond our pilot program, uh, to approve Washoe County School District's plan to launch a full-scale implementation of phone away learn today.
So thank you so much for doing this. And you know what? What do we say? We don't want to have to be told by the legislature to do something. We would rather be the model that they go, hey, Washoe County is doing something really well. And that's exactly what we did in this situation. So, um, thank you so much for this update on the, um, on the item. I, I have a question that I'll start off with. So, okay, we're going to former principal Reno High School, respect on our strength. You've been doing this for a while. Reno High has been doing this for a while. Other schools are newer in their path and we did change this midstream last school year, okay? What are the supports in place for, you've got some schools and communities, whether it's a newer concept or an existing, that are really gelling around this? And you may have other schools that this is a more challenging new cultural aspect. What are the supports for the school communities that need a little more help in understanding the benefit to this?
Well, you know, I think what I would say is the, um, support. Well, you know, I think what I would say is the um support and capacity of our principals, number one, in working with their classroom-level uh teachers to build um strong classroom managers and really working with our young people on the why this is important, and that's why the SEL lessons, I think, are critical. And if we can build more capacity in, in providing those to our students. And then, as we talked about in the spring, the onboarding process, right? It's onboarding parents maybe at fifth grade um and the students in two different ways. You know, onboarding a parent in their role in um navigating electronic devices for their students as well as preparing students that may receive a device in the future. And then on the flip side, I think our biggest challenge is going to be the high school. And we saw that mid-year last year, right? Because they're older, they're uh more independent. And so I believe we're going to see a lot more cooperation and understanding from our high school students and families knowing this really was coming, and then this is the standard. And I was in a middle school today, actually, and I spoke with a principal that went, uh, they're going to do a tighter uh policy than they had last year, which is all under the umbrella of this policy, and getting nothing but kudos from the community and a thank you from parents going, yeah, this is very important, and we need to reclaim our instructional time.
That's amazing. Quick follow-up. We have back to school coming up. Do we know if all or most of the principals have a plan to have this policy be a part of back-to-school messages, back-to-school nights, parent handbooks, that kind of thing?
Absolutely, yes. And I really believe the work we did in the pilot set the stage for this. And I can tell you that principals know the expectation. And, and when they know the expect- expectation, we see this in so many other pockets of what we do, they always rise to the occasion.
So, uh, thank you, man, chair. Uh, Mr. Hackbush, um, I really appreciate your use of onboarding parents. I would say educating, but that's, that's, that's a good uh, uh phrase. Um, I've been impressed, you know? I mean, I know this was some heavy, heavy lifting for staff, and we really appreciate all the work you guys did. Um, I was anticipating us getting bombarded with emails from parents, and we haven't seen that. So knock on wood, you know, that we, we don't see it. But um, it would pale, pale in comparison to the amount of complaints we used to receive about, you guys have to do something about those phones in schools. I don't hear that anymore.
Right.
You know, so I'm glad. I, I feel like we were uh the tip of the spear in our, in our region. I feel like we started this and, and, and others are now following, and uh, this is one of the, I didn't think of this earlier when we were doing board development, but they were asking us what was one of our things that we were proud of, and I forgot about this one. I'm really proud about what we did here with this. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, President Smith. Hi.
Hi.
I'm, I myself, I'm really happy for SB four forty-four passing because that does, this is, like my colleague said, this is a very heavy lift. This kind of gives us the foundation that what we are trying to do. Others are seeing that this is necessary. I, I just had a question, and then I, I'm going to say it again, consistency, consistency. Because if one teacher is allowing this to occur in their classroom, and then the expectation in another classroom is different, that's where the arguments come from. Because the kids, I can see where they would say, well, teacher so-and-so, and now you're saying we can't do it here. So we have to have consistency. The other thing, though, and I might have been listening with rose-colored ears and looking through rose-colored glasses, but I remember seeing spas, cubbies, curtains with phones going behind curtains. We even had a couple of students come up and say that a phone sitting on the desk is a distraction. So I'm a little confused when I'm seeing the policy plans for next year. Fifty-five percent will require students to keep phones away during instruction. I, I thought it was going to be a hundred percent they're going in a spa, cubby behind a curtain. Okay, so I'm a little confused there that they'll leave phones at home. I knew that we'd never required them to leave them at home because of the medical and emergencies, which I fully understand and supportive of. The other, what it, what is the other? And then allowing teachers to determine and enforce their own ca- classroom policy. I thought it was phones away, learn today, if the lesson required a phone, then, or for an emergency, but I thought phones away. Uh, I'm going to say it again, a spa, a cubby behind a curtain somewhere. And I will reiterate, we had students here saying how disruptive and destructive it is in the classroom when they're on a desk. And so I'm just a little dismayed, and I would like to know what the other is. What is the other?
Well, I think what, what I would say is focus on off and away. That's what I would say. So what we have to remember on off and away is the distraction piece and us building capacity with our teachers. Because we have a bunch of teachers that have um, just like students, they come to us with different um backgrounds, personalities, classroom management, um, uh, strategies, and we have to build capacity. So we're going to need that time this year to really iron those things out. And because I'll give you a quick example on emergency management. SB four forty-four um requires that we have some flexibility in this area and access to their devices, right? So because of that, there needs to be, we, we have to just have the threshold of they're off and away. And then administrators and building capacity with our site leadership. And when they're doing walkthroughs, part of the walkthrough look fours, when you walk into a classroom is, are there devices out or in, in interrupting instruction? Like, that's, that's a immediate check. And it'll be an immediate check when I'm in a classroom, and when our principal's in a classroom, and, and that's expectation. So I guess I would just go back to the overall expectation is these devices are not interrupting the instruction that's happening in our classroom. And then how we get there may be differentiated at times, but we have to build capacity and we have to help train our teachers to feel comfortable enough to confront these. Because there's lots of discipline areas that teachers encounter that they need help navigating, and that will be a focal point of our support on this policy moving forward.
I, I do like that because I, I know, and I've been reminded several times, and I'm really, I know that this is a work in progress. But I just, I have to say that our policy was phones away, learn today. I don't remember anything about off and, what was it, off and away, or?
They're, they're off and away. We're not seeing the, we're not seeing the devices.
Okay.
So, and we're concentrating on the instruction that's happening in the classroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just since we did the policy, I kind of like, me, my personal opinion, I like sticking with what we establish as a board. Phones away, learn today.
Yep.
Nothing about off and, and put away.
That's the language of the policy. So I'm just reiterating exactly what, yeah, it is the phones away, learn today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that's a perfect segue because I was going to ask about the, the line on this, second to last slide says, calibrate staff on data entry of technology violations. Um, anyone who's ever worked in infinite campus can tell you that entering a behavior violation in infinite campus is a little cumbersome. So I'm curious what the plan is to ensure that we're supporting teachers um when they're in the middle of classroom instruction, that they can easily add those things? Or, or what is, how are we instructing them to, to do that? Because I know we want to make sure we're collecting data, um, but it's, it's a, it's a bit of a cumbersome system. So is there a specific plan in place to ensure that we can collect that data and that we're keeping track of it? And also so that parents can see, you know, hey, you've got a middle school student, and in all eight of their classes, they had a technology violation? Or if it's in seven classes that it's getting reported, but the one teacher is having trouble with, you know, putting them in, how are we making sure that we're seeing those, that continuum across the board?
Right. Uh, I, I think you see some schools where teachers enter the minor uh referrals into the system and, and the consistency with that on the flow of the day can be challenging.
Yeah.
Um, I think um in many cases, our schools will have like a student relations office or a dean be entering um infractions that reach a level where it's disrupted the class. I think, I think if we can really focus there, because there's going to be informal prompting, addressing, right? You know, and I think the data that we're going to analyze is what's in infinite campus. And um, you know, and, and working with our schools through our behavior and MTSS goals that we have many of our schools working on this year as a, as a focal point for their school and their systems and structures is who's entering tho- those minor offenses. But them being put in the same place will be a great start for this year.
Yes. And, and I think that's why I was asking is, is if there's a designated person at the school that's going to handle that part of it so that it is all being entered in the same way, in the same manner, because it is a bit of a cumbersome system? Or if maybe there's like a cheat sheet or something for people to enter, like this is what this means. That might help us to collect the data, but also make it a little simpler on the teacher end or the dean or whoever it is. So um, I, you don't, you don't need to have an answer on this right now, but it's just something that may be amongst the, the chiefs and the area superintendents or even at the Principals Academy or something, you guys can have some discussions about how we can make it a little less cumbersome. Because I know that that data will be really important to us, um, but I also know um how cumbersome it can be um when you have thirty-five kids in your room to be entering that kind of stuff, so.
Absolutely.
Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for taking all the, sitting there in the hot seat, taking all the what, all the hard questions.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I had a, uh, so late last year, late last school year, which means to say a few months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, I was, uh, I was invited to uh a high school to observe uh thi- this policy. And, and uh, walked in the hallways, looked into a number of um, of classrooms, uh, and, you know, many students were, were on their phone. This particular educator um has a, uh, and, and a lot of the, the questions, the comments are sort of uh what trustee Westlake and trustee Hall have, have stated, so I'm sort of piggybacking on, on some of your, your comments and observations. But this particular teacher had a uh, a cabinet that the students are required to put their phone in and walk away. Works for this particular person. But then this, we walked the hallways, a lot of, uh, a lot of folks, a lot of students still on their phones. Um, I, I, and so I haven't heard uh necessarily positive or negative, but positive feedback on how this policy is working. Uh, I, I suspect as you have uh the class of twenty-six and twenty-seven sort of begin to graduate and move on, it may be easier as those, those, as that younger generation comes up, you know, in, in, in this, uh, in this mindset, where we can even make this, this policy tougher, and at some point, perhaps even a complete
Yeah.
elimination of electronic devices in, in schools. That's where I personally think we should go. And that gradual approach, I think, is, is important. Ambiguity sort of leads to this inconsistency enforcement. Uh, and what, what do you see as sort of a, a, a progressive discipline for phone use with students? Is, is there anything in place now for that?
Yes, yeah. We have our behavior matrix, which will align. So there's, there's a, there's something that our disciplinarians encountering these situations can follow. And it's aligned, aligns with the Senate bill and our, our regulation. So that's the intent, and it follows the Senate bill because it's a progression, progressive steps, you know? And again, we have to involve student voice in this process. We have to involve the families for the buy-in. And so the more we communicate and talk about it and bring up these issues, I think are, are critical. And um, and that'll help with our consistency, I believe. Um, it needs to be a topic, and it needs to be a topic we're um evaluating throughout the year. And we're also hopefully changing culture across grade levels as well as hopefully, which we would all love, is impact outcomes in a positive way for our students.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it really comes down to reclaiming instructional time.
Correct.
It really does. These are all minutes. Um, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Okay, who want to take my phone? All right. All right. Hello, guys. So my name is Pablo Navaduran, and I will support this superintendent recommendation of a take a phone away, you know, phone and phone away and learn today program because that program is necessary to pass because we have state law that you have to require to interpret that law to put the cellphones away. And otherwise, you could paradise and get fines, or you'll remove from a board. So I will support that decision. Also, I'm, I'm a substitute at multiple high school. I see with the special ed, special ed that needs some of a phone for to, to combat, consolidation with file four plan or I P's, all kinds of stuff. And then I learned it firsthand, so I will support, make sure to put the phone away. I know high school can be a little bit tricky because they're more independent. At middle school, a hundred percent put the phone away. So if I see it, take it away, send to the admin office. Yep, bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
That's all I have.
So to bring it back here for um just a couple other things, I'm glad that we are going to create some clarity around smartwatches. Because while so much of the conversation centers around teenagers in high school, they are expected to have a degree of moderation and ability to control what it is they're doing. But elementary school kids, I mean, you put a video game on a five-year-old's wrist, I got to be honest, it is very hard for me to expect that five-year-old, and that's really where families come in. Um, and that's kind of why I'm also hoping that the back-to-school messages and all of that isn't just middle school and high school. I know it's not because smartwatches are exploding in elementary schools. But I have a hard time holding them to the same standard as I would a seventeen-year-old. There's impulse, control differences with that, and that's really where the families come in. Because ultimately, we're doing this to change culture generationally for students. And then as they get older, reminding them that as they go into college and as they go into the workforce, they will not be able to be on a phone because they don't feel entertained in any given moment. And that's really our responsibility is to be growing children that enter into our communities as, as adults members of it. So I look forward to seeing that, and then perhaps in like a superintendent's memo, um, not for another meeting, but in a memo, we could get some information about how that's also rolling out in the elementary schools. Because the devices can be taken from a student and then only relinquished back to a parent. Is that correct?
Absolutely. That's part of the progressive discipline plan.
Okay. So I guess I will ask all the parents out there to understand that we're doing this together as a team, and we're doing it for all the right reasons as well. And if anybody wants to know where their child is or to provide an update, they can always call the office. It's what we did in the eighties. All right. Well, this, this is an item for action, so it feels like we've had a good conversation about this, if anyone feels so inclined.
I'll go ahead and do it. I just want to comment before that, though. I'll be anxious to see the data and the information this time next year to see how, if it's impacted or not. With that, uh, the Board of Trustees, I move to uh the Board of Trustees to approve the plan to launch the full-scale implementation of the phone away and learn today program in align with NRS three nine two point four six three seven.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Phoenix. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. That closes item three point zero four. And before we go to break, I do want to note that we will be pulling item three point one four from the agenda at staff's recommendation. That will come forward at another time. And on that note, it is four twenty-one PM, and we will go into a brief recess. Thank you.
All right, everybody. All right, everyone. Here we go. It is 4:45 PM on this Tuesday, July 29, 2025, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We just finished and closed item 3.04. I also announced that we will be removing item 3.14. We will be bringing that back to a future meeting. And so we will now proceed. So colleagues and the public, we're going to be combining some of these items. And so I will announce now how we're going to be combining some of these similar topics, which also means that we'll be combining those discussions. So just so everyone is aware, I will be next opening items 3.05 and 3.06. Then I will be opening in one item 3.07, 3.09, and 3.12. Those all involve issues around our civil rights. Then we will open item 3.08, 3.11, 3.13, and 3.10. But we will walk through all of this together, okay? So that means that we will begin with opening items 3.05 and 3.06. Item 3.05 is a presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendments to Board Policy 4214, alcohol and drug-free workplace policy, formerly alcohol and controlled substance-free workplace, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action, combined also with item 3.06, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the adoption of Board Policy 7XXX, tobacco use and smoking prohibited, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. And we have presenting our chief legal counsel, Neil Lombardo. And so just as a little bit of an update for how we do combined items, it is a combined public comment for one. And although we can separate out the motions, we can also do combined motions for the single item, okay? And so the way that we're going to follow this model is we're going to have our chief legal counsel provide a brief overview. We will then go to public comment, and then if we have any changes or deliberations, we'll do it after that point. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, trustees. Before we get started on 305 and 306, I have a half-hour presentation regarding policies. No, just kidding. Just kidding. Just kidding. I do want to give just a quick background, though, just to bring everyone's focus to what we're trying to get accomplished today. As a lot of you know, the responsibility of board policies were handed over to our office in 2020. In 2022, we set out to rewrite and organize all the policies. We accomplished that. And then in 2023, the board voted for us to take a policy diet, if you remember that, from the Nevada Association of School Board. And unfortunately, our diet didn't go along too well because of other issues. So we are now here today to implement the diet of board policies, and that's what our team is bringing to you. So I'd like to thank Superintendent Ernst and Deputy Superintendent McMaster. I'd like to thank the board for supporting this effort. And I'd like to thank and recognize my team. These guys, in June, I said, "We're doing this." And they all kind of looked at me like, "Oh, boy." And we got it done. So here we are today. And also, thanks Troy. Thank you to Troy for supporting us on 5150. So that all being said, let's move on to board policy 3.05 and 3.06. And my game plan is, as you all know, I sent you a legal memo. I'm not going to go into details related to that because it's attorney-client privilege. If you ask questions related to it, that's great, and that's fine. But I tried to explain all of the policies in that memo. So Board Policy 4214, alcohol and drug-free workplace, much, if not all of this, was borrowed from our neighbors in Arizona. I should mention that we did work with the Nevada Association, excuse me, not Nevada, National Association of School Boards, Arizona Association of School Boards, New Jersey Association of School Boards. We looked at policies from other districts in Nevada, as well as California. This one is basically a borrowing, I'll use that term, from Arizona. And it basically just highlights that employees cannot show up to work intoxicated on either alcohol or on drugs. And so it's really simple, straightforward. It removes a lot of unnecessary language. And you can see that, as part of our diet, I think we're removing approximately two and a half pages of stuff and replacing it with about a page of policy, which is, we feel, is very good. Then with regard to item 3.06, interestingly enough, this actually comes from the Nevada Clean Air Act. What we found was that tobacco was mentioned in multiple policies throughout the district, as well as regulations. And so to clean that up and to get it into one spot, we started doing research, and I stumbled upon the Nevada Clean Air Act. And the Nevada Clean Air Act specifically says that school boards could and should adopt regulations and policies, excuse me, not regulations, policies related to tobacco use and smoking. And so here it is. And this is a brand-new policy. So we are adding one. But what we will be doing is we will be able to clean up four different regulations that have tobacco discussions in it. That'll all be removed, and it's all now in one document before you today. So we're looking for a motion to approve these two items.
All right. So we're going to start with public comment. Do we have any comment, JJ, on items 3.05 or 3.06?
I have nothing for those items.
All right. So we can bring it back here. We can make changes, ask questions, or we can move to adopt in a combined motion. Trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. Counsel Neil, I did have a question on what would be considered, let's see, tobacco use purpose summary, skipping down to tobacco use on district property except in specific locations at district buildings not being used to schools. What would be, what's?
This building.
Okay.
So that statute is very clear that school buildings and school grounds are as defined in another NRS, and it means specifically where kids are attending.
Okay. Class. Okay. Thank you.
So you can't smoke on.
The playground, for example, if you were a teacher who smoked, if there's kids there, no smoking.
Okay.
If it's an admin building, then you can designate a location. I worked with Superintendent Ernst, who agreed with me that that location should still be away from ingress and egress so people don't have to walk through smoking.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other questions, we can move towards an action.
I can make a motion. Thank you. Because this is going to be a challenge. I'm going to try and do it together. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed amendments to Board Policy 4214, alcohol and drug-free workplace, and preliminary approval to the proposed addition of Board Policy 7XXX, tobacco use and smoking prohibited, and for both initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
Awesome. I second.
That's a home run. All right. We have a motion by trustee Westlake. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. Vice President Mayberry?
Just one question. Since we're taking, we have so many policies to look at, we have a, just clarification, 13-day public review, comment period. So this, all these will come back to us, and certainly have some more discussion if it's warranted.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And so on that point, excellent, excellent clarification.
Yeah.
You follow me on this? If the public comment process results in significant changes, the legal counsel can fully put it back on the agenda for reaffirmation. Otherwise, it goes on consent, where it would need two trustees to actually pull it, because it will have already been heard once. But if substantial, not de minimis, changes are made, then it would fully go back on here for us to reaffirm and then restart that process.
Perfect. Yeah, that's the premise of my question. Thank you, Madam President. It's perfect.
Yeah, absolutely.
I should have asked that already.
No, no.
Trustee. Sorry. I know we're kind of have an open motion, so if I'm in the wrong on this. But in the new proposal with tobacco use and smoking, I'm not seeing anything specified about marijuana use. Do we have another policy on that?
Well, it's the drug policy.
The previous one.
Right. So you can't show up intoxicated. And this goes smoking of any kind, if you read it. It's not just tobacco.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Okay. Thanks.
And we, just so you know, I borrowed that language from the Nevada Clean Air Act.
Well, it does. There is a mention of marijuana in this policy. Yeah.
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 All right. Thank you all so much. And that's completely okay to bring up, because you could have asked for a friendly, you know, to the motion, or we could have let that die and then come back. All right. So we have a motion by trustee Westlake. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. So for those following along, that now closes item 3.05 and 3.06. We will now open three items, 3.07, 3.09, and 3.12, which are, 3.07, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the adoption of Board Policy 0100, non-discrimination and equal opportunity, and deletion of Board Policies 4400, equal opportunity in employment, 9200, harassment and discrimination, 9210, equity and diversity, and 9215, creating and maintaining a positive culture in climate, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. Also opened with item 3.09, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of Board Policy 9070, Board Policies Administrative Regulations and Administrative Procedures manuals, and the initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period, also for possible action. And then finally, item 3.12, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of Board Policy 5700, safe and respectful learning environment, and the initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period, also for possible action. And I will turn it back over to our chief legal counsel, who is also joined by our general counsel of civil rights compliance, Judy Preetzman. Welcome.
Thank you again, President Smith. To save time, I'm just going to keep going. So right now, so the reason why we combine these three, they all relate to civil rights. We're very excited as a legal team about policy 0100, which Judy will give you a little more information on. Regarding the reason why Board Policy 9070 fits along with 0100 is the change related to a new zero series of policies. We're going to call that foundational documents. We borrowed that concept from a couple jurisdictions, specifically Arizona, though. We really liked the way that that kind of set up. And we felt as a legal team that non-discrimination is a foundational document that should exist as a foundational document in a school district. So we were very, I say the word excited. I'm the only one excited about this. I get that. But I'm excited. I think it's a great, you're excited? All right. Judy's excited, too. All right. Very good. And then finally, and also then 5700 relates because it's all civil rights. And that's our respectful and learning environment. Again, we gave you a legal memo, and I would just like Judy to give a quick rundown from her perspective as the civil rights general counsel.
Thank you, Judy Preetzman, general counsel of Department of Civil Rights Compliance, for the record. And so the Department of Civil Rights Compliance is responsible for ensuring that the district complies with all of our federal and state laws, civil rights laws. Those are the laws that prohibit discrimination and harassment in all of our school environments. And so I am excited about our new policy, Board Policy 0100, because it reaffirms and strengthens the district's longstanding commitment to the protection of civil rights for all of our students, employees, and community members. By consolidating this new policy and what it represents into one comprehensive policy that incorporates the other concepts and protections in the board policies that we recommend removing, we will have one comprehensive policy that addresses all the civil rights components that we are responsible for following. And it's also aligned with legal best practices. To have this kind of policy that addresses all types of discrimination and harassment towards all of the individuals who are protected in our schools, students, staffs, and of course, public members for certain civil rights laws, we're really clarifying the protections that we're responsible for providing to our individuals and schools.
Thank you. JJ, do we have any public comment on items 3.07, 3.09, or 3.12?
We do not.
Okay. I'll go, do you want, no, that's okay. I've got, I have ones on this. Do you want to go first, or I've got my?
Do yours and then?
Okay. So a little bit of background here. In reviewing these, everything that I'm going to be sharing, I've also previously discussed with legal counsel so that they know these suggestions are coming. And they'll be weighing in on that, too. For my professional history, a lot of these opinions that I'll be sharing, my analysis on some of these is not just personal opinion. I have years' worth of global corporate policy creation. And so that's also the lens through which I look at this. So the reason why I preface that is by saying that it's very important in a policy to not just say what's not allowed. You have to also say what you are creating, what you are committing to. There has to be an affirmative, not just the things that are not actually allowed. And then, as we remember, of course, that board policies are the what, admin regulations are the how. But we still need to say what we stand for, what our vision is, what we expect. So again, we have to have that place of affirmation. So with that said, for item 3.07, I absolutely support bringing these policies together. But there are a few key intent statements that I think the public needs to know. Where do they go when they want to understand the priorities and the positions of our board? They go to board policy. So case in point, on the policy for deletion of Board Policy 9210, under Policy 1A, there's a line there that I have already brought to the legal team that I would like to pull into this current policy, because it doesn't exist as it is right now. It's just the one. And its district policies, programs, and activities shall foster recognition of and respect for basic human rights, fundamental freedoms, and equitable opportunities and outcomes for all. So this is not something that we don't already have right now, but it's fundamentally not in the revised version. in the revised version, it's just that one statement, and I think that we can't eliminate everything from this, we have to, I believe, as a board, we need to be clear about fostering recognition of and respect.
President Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt, I really am, but I'm looking at 9210, and can you direct me specifically to you, what you're referencing?
Sure, so on 9210, it would be page three, and it is 1A, so not the one, but the A, and that's at the very top of page three. And it's that, yeah, and it's, it's just that one section, because when I contemplate us taking these four policies and bringing it into one, I kind of feel like some representation of the deleted policies need to be in the combined, and I do believe that it's important that we somewhere, anywhere, communicate that this is a value of ours, because the current policy for replacement doesn't include any of these items on it. So, that one section was one that I was going to ask that we carry over to the new policy. The other one, which is also just a portion of one sentence, is from Board Policy 9215, that's also a policy contemplated for deletion, and it's in the purpose statement, it is a partial sentence, beginning about two-thirds of the way down with the word "the board and superintendent." So what I am proposing is that we pull in, because again, if we're deleting these policies, we, I feel it's important that we don't lose the spirit and intent of what the original creating a climate and maintaining a positive culture means, and so I have spoken with the legal counsel about maintaining "the board and superintendent recognize the importance of creating and maintaining a positive and respectful culture and climate," period. There's more to that sentence, but I'm suggesting that we just stop it right there at "respectful culture and climate," because I do believe that that is something that we should say in our policies somewhere. So I will pause on that, I had previously discussed this with legal counsel, and of course, invite your thoughts on both of those ideas.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, what my suggestion would be is that we add them as sub-paragraphs to 0100, so we would just be, make them paragraphs, I believe it would be, let me flip around here real quick, I apologize for the delay, but we would make it paragraphs seven and eight, and then make current paragraph seven, nine. And the reason why I'm doing that is because we normally end on the administrative regulations, so we just make those two sub-paragraphs, and, and I think it meets the president's desires, and if that's what the board wants to do, we can make that happen. I, I don't have any legal objection, I did, President Smith and I worked out that sentence, that's underlined, that's up there, there are concerns after that, where she ended it, so that's why we stopped there.
And, and I appreciate that, thank you so much for understanding that, I believe we also have to be public and clear about what we do stand for, and not just necessarily what is, is not necessarily allowed, thank you, I appreciate that. Trustee Westlake?
I was just concerned, I don't agree with this, just want to say that, but I want to make sure we're not doing anything to get into trouble, because I didn't, the federal government just say something about equitable and diversity, so I just, I mean, maybe we need a different word than "and equitable opportunities and outcomes for all." I'm just saying, they went all cuckoo about that.
Well, man, that's something we could talk about, but equitable opportunities is special education, but I, here's the thing, I don't part, I don't personally participate in false politicization over words. Equitable is special education, it's deaf and hardened hearing, it's gifted and talented. So, I will personally say that I believe that in this context, the word is completely okay, because we do have children of different abilities, and so to wipe that clear would be creating, I think, additional confusion, so that, that would be my two cents, we do create equitable outcomes, it's why we have different tracks of learning, but, but I'm not the lawyer, so I will defer to our chief legal counsel.
How crazy they're going to get about all this.
Well, so you're right, that has become a concern politically, the term equity, that being said, I think in this sense, it's defensible, and, look, I don't think, I've never suggested that you guys kowtow to politics, and I don't suggest you do it now, you do what you think is right, if you think it's right, then add it in.
Well, I was just going to say that I think, I think that the, the phrase that's become politicized is not equitable, it's equity, in addition to two other words with it, and so I, I would agree that this, this is a different scenario, and so I'm not, not as concerned. I'd like the idea of pulling those in as additional paragraphs, I think they're both really important, and I do, I just want to just ditto that, I like ending that sentence where, where you kind of ended it, I think, I think it's really clear, and it doesn't need the, the additional piece, I don't think that's necessary, so.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this particular policy, and when I say this particular, we're talking about the new 0100?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, for 307.
And I understand what, what you're saying about the word equity, I, I really do. Having said that, I think what's really important to note for me, because I had that same thought, was the policy's called nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, correct? So right out of the chute, we, we are, we are mentioning that this is, there's a, there's a blanket equality that has to touch everyone, and then there's particulars. I, I do understand what you're saying, trustee.
All right, if there's no other comments on that one, we can move the discussion on now to item 3.09, remember, it's a whole discussion, but if, if that feels settled, we can now move on to that next one on the list, to see if anyone has any comments on what is now the amendment to 9070, and, and we may not, if nobody has anything on that, we can always move on to.
I, I should mention, and I failed to mention this, sorry, we are adding the zero series, and then the other thing is that we're putting a may in there instead of a shall, because it says Board Policies shall contain, and then it lists out what they can have in them, but we don't always need definitions, and so that can create confusion, so since we were in here tweaking it anyway, we thought we'd take the shall and make it a may. Beyond that, we're, again, excited to create foundational documents for you, I think it would be a nice guidepost for the future.
All right, seeing no comments for that item, we can move the discussion on now to the amended policy around 5700, this is represented in item 3.12. And I do have one small one, again, that I had already brought to the chief legal counsel, and there was a point, and a chief legal counsel has a recommendation here for us, because again, it was more about what's not allowed, and one of the potential deletions is what we're committed to, and I was like, oh gosh, we have to still say what we're committed to, rather than just what's not allowed, and, and I believe that they took that suggestion and perhaps has something to offer to the colleagues. It was previously 1A on the, the previous version, like if you scroll down to policy, so on this policy, if, if JJ scrolls down, yep, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Do you want those crossed out?
Yeah, okay, so this is, this is what I paused on, because it's what we're committed to, I agree, we don't need all five of these, so I, I asked them, can we at least have something that does specify what we are committed to, and, and I believe that they may have a suggestion for that.
Actually, you basically hit on it, we'll just re, we'll make paragraph 1A, paragraph one, renumber everything below, and it'll just read, "The Washoe County School District, District is committed to," no colon, "providing an environment in which persons of differing beliefs, characteristics, and backgrounds can realize their full academic and personal potential," period.
And that's exactly what I asked for, so thank you so much, again, because we just, we can't have the not, we also have something that we're committed to. So, thank you for that, any, any thoughts on that?
Yes, and it's not that I'm against it, I just wonder how that adds to the policy when given on page one, and just to clarify, because there's so many, we're on 5700, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Safe and respectful learning environment, it's very clear to me, I guess, what we're providing and what our beliefs are, we seek to create a safe, respectful learning environment, and then against harassment, power-based violence, in order for students to succeed, so I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know if I think it adds anything. Having said that, I'm always a less is best when it comes to policy, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, and that's a good thing, but again, policies, again, my professional experience can't just be what it's free from, you also have to say what we're committed to, and this would be the only place in any policy where we're saying that we're providing an environment where people with different beliefs, and so I do think we need at least one thing, not asking for all five, but I believe that we need one, so that's why I brought that forward. All right, so if there's no other comments or changes to that, I would look for a combined motion for items 3.07, 09, and 3.12 with amendments.
Also, as part of that motion, the deletion of the other named policies, 9210, 9215, 9200, 9210, and 9215.
Absolutely, it can definitely be three different motions, we would just have to make sure on 307 and 312 that we also say with, with amendments.
So clarification, we are, we are eliminating five, four to make one, I personally don't want to separate it, I want it to be very clear, without being redundant, that we are eliminating the four to create the one.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not what I meant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So what she's saying is, we're going to move forward with three separate and distinct action items to capture the changes.
That's why I said what I said, I would prefer one, but, okay, go for it.
Okay, yeah, no, it, it can be done both ways, truly, it can be done.
Okay, all right, I'll try to do them all in one, and then somebody can tell me if I missed something, okay. All right, I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Policy 0100, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, and deletion of Board Policies 4400, 9200, 9210, and 9215, with the proposed amendments. In addition, the, also approves the preliminary appro, sorry, provides the preliminary approval, no, did I miss anything? Okay, to the proposed amendments to Board Policy 9070, the Board Policies Administrative Regulations and Administrative Procedures Manual, and the preliminary approval to the proposed amendments to the Board Policy 5700, the safe and respectful learning environment, with the proposed amendments, and initiates a 13-day public review and comment period for all.
Yay!
All right.
I would say you should second that, after you had her do that, 100%, that is like, we were all waiting, you're clearly seconding that. Okay, we have a motion from trustee Hull, a second by trustee Nicolet, for the proposed changes with the amendments, seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero.
I appreciate your opinion.
We never, no fear. All right, so that closes item 3.07, 3.09, and 3.12. We will now open individually, item 3.08, this is the presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendments to Board Policy 1600, public complaint and resolution process, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period, this is an item for possible action.
So this is just an update to our current board policy as it relates to public complaints and resolution process, it was originally with our office, and that's how we picked these, we feel it's better that it moves over to the deputy superintendent's office, because the public really shouldn't be working with us, we're biased, we work for you, and that's, so it doesn't make sense. But basically, with this new policy, the, the significant change is on page two, which is basically, you're directing the superintendent to adopt a process for if there's a public complaint against him or her, and, and what that looks like, and it's already written in the reg, but it was never in policy, so I had to make the policy consistent with the reg, so that's why I added that in there. Beyond that, there's nothing really substantive, except removing a bunch of superfluous language, so we would look for you to approve, and see that you approve this policy as amended, thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, if there's any comments or thoughts, we can entertain those now, or we can move for a motion.
I'll make a motion, thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed amendments to Board Policy 1600, public complaint and resolution process, and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Westlake, we have a second by Vice President Mayberry, seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero, thank you. That closes item 3.08. We will now move over to item 3.11, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of Board Policy 7610, public records requests, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period, this is an item for possible action.
Similar to the last item, just really a cleanup to be more consistent, Andrea's here, she helped us with this one, but beyond that, I don't, do, does everyone know Andrea Shulwich, from our associate general counsel? Andrea helped us with this, and rewrote this for us, and there's not too much substantial here, there was a new case that came out, talking about delaying response, kind of disagree with the case, but nonetheless, we don't do it that way here in the Washoe County School District, but if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, we're looking for approval.
All right, I'll bring it back here for any questions, suggestions, or we can move to action.
Okay, I'll go, I'm sorry, you ready for a motion? Okay, yeah, I'll move approve item.
I didn't, did I, I didn't do public comment, yes, okay, but thank you for that catch, oh man, I almost made it like three years without making that mistake. JJ, do we have any public comment on that?
We do not.
Okay.
You know we'd never let you go, if she has public comment, we'll stop you, so you don't have anything to worry about.
Man, I feel like I just broke my Wordle, you know, streak, okay.
So, move to approve item 3.11.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, and a second by trustee Westlake, seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero, thank you so much, team, that now closes item 3.11. And now we will move on to item 3.13, this is the presentation and possible action to...
3.11.
Oh, we're doing that one last, and this is all very deliberate, when you, when we get to that one. So item 3.13, presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of Board Policy 5150. approval for the amendment of Board Policy 5150, student freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and right to assemble, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action.
Thank you again. I'm here with Sarah, our Deputy Chief General Counsel, Sarah Montalvo. You guys all know Sarah. We have one slight change that we were going to suggest based off of conversations, to paragraph one on page, well, it's 862 of the stuff I printed out, page three of the policy itself. We'd like paragraph one to read now. The district supports student freedom of expression and assembly, while also recognizing the balance of promoting a safe and respectful learning environment within the district. And then, with the exception of student publications, which is addressed in this board policy, the district may take action to include discipline when a student engages in unprotected speech and/or through speech, expression, or assembly, which causes, or is reasonably believed, will create a substantial disruption. And then it goes on, and it says, "which may include the following student's speech and list A, B, and C." So it's a slight change to make it more affirmative on what is allowed by the students. Sarah worked on that today, so thank you, Sarah, for doing that for us. And we think this is, we really like these changes. They're very simple. I don't know if you have anything you want to add. And thank you again, Troy and his team, for helping us with this as well.
Hi, everyone. Deputy Chief General Counsel, Sarah Montalvo. Yes, to Neil's point, this was, again, a cleanup, because we had a lot of kind of superfluous language, some redundancies in there. And we also just wanted to be consistent with Board Policy 9070, which is really the more, you want to get into much more detail about the where, when, how, and why in the regulations, especially with student's speech. This is a very fluid kind of results that we're seeing consistent changes all the time in the courts. And so, in order for us to be able to kind of keep up with the pace of where the courts are going with student's speech, new decisions come out all the time, we wanted to make sure that the regulations really are the ones that really update those, so we can get them in real time, rather than, you know, the very rigorous process that goes through the board policies, while also maintaining what we have seen is the board stance, of course, of allowing freedom of expression and assembly, while balancing that you can engage in unprotected speech. You don't get, you don't have a First Amendment, you know, First Amendment right to bully, you don't have a First Amendment right to engage in hate speech, and you don't get to go and proselytize during instruction, interrupt other student's speech. So this strikes the balance while also maintaining that your goal to promote student expression, but responsibly. And then, the student publication section, that's in a statute, it's actually contrary to United States Supreme Court precedent, but the Nevada Legislature, I believe it was in 2021, updated that with some heavy lobbying from the journalism societies. So that has to stay, because that's in statute. And that's why we also were specific about the regulation for the student publications, because that has to be there pursuant to the statutes, and it's already in a regulation right now. We just wanted to make sure there was, it also included, and we already started updating the regulations, there was a piece missing in that statute, so that will be updated. And so that can't be changed, and it has to be kept that way. But we just, you know, wanted to present these so you could see kind of that there's, the student's speech is a very fluid type of analysis that's constantly changing in the courts. And we just wanted to take out a lot of that superfluous language in the policy.
If I may, real quick, Sarah brought up two really good points, and I should have expressed this earlier. We are on the back end, working on administrative regulations for every one of these, which will be ready to go once you approve. So those will start going out in August, so you'll see that. But the second point, and you'll hear this also on the employee's speech, First Amendment stuff changes all the time. So you have to really be careful what you put in your policy. Otherwise, you're going to see us all the time as well. And I know you're enjoying this, and as excited as I am, but you don't want to see me that much, right? So let's be honest. So that's why, that's why we really like these changes, and we think they're good.
I appreciate that. I like genuinely love policy. Like, oh my gosh, I love it. So first, I'd like to say thank you. So that change that legal counsel brought forward was also one of the things I had asked for. Same vein as what I've been saying, you can't just have, like, you have to say something that we are committed to, so students know. And I very much appreciate that our legal counsel took that to heart. And so, when I brought that up, now they have that amendment, and that meets my intent with making sure that we're still clear what students can do, what we are committed that they can do. And so what they suggested meted, meets the need of what I had brought up. So thank you so much for being amenable to that. Trustee Hull, and then Trustee Westlake, and then we'll go to a public comment.
I too really enjoy this. Judy can vouch for me and say, I used to go to her office and get her NRS books and read them. Not kidding, I used to look it up in her office when we were at the Department of Ed. I have two questions about this one, and they're probably items that would go in the administrative regulations, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're kind of thinking through this. So one of the areas of speech that often makes the news is graduation commencement speeches. And I know we have a, you know, something in every program, but I just, I just want to make sure that that's something that we're, we're making sure is in line with this. And then the other area is, I guess it's a publication, but a lot of schools are starting to do some kind of a, like, the student council can have an Instagram page. But in a way, that's a publication. And so I just want to make sure that those are, like, where those are being covered. And whether it's in regulations, or it's in policy, I don't know which is the better place for it. But it seems that if it's going to have the school name on it, especially a social media, that we're covering that in some way, in a policy or a regulation. Because if it's, if it looks like it's coming from us, but the students are publishing it, we should have some, you know, policies around that, that's all.
Well, and I think that goes to your point about the state law being contradictory to the Supreme Court. So the US Supreme Court says, if our name's on it, we can manage it, basically. I'm oversimplifying, but we'll just go with that. Our Nevada Legislature actually went back to the old Tinker standard, which says it has to be substantially disruptive. So that creates an issue. I'm not sure, Sarah, do you know, does publication include online?
So I'm reading the student publication definition in this policy. It, I don't believe that those social media pages would be contemplated to fit within that definition. And when the legislature went and made those updates, it really was a push for these kind of co-curricular classes that you have, for like, the yearbook, and for the student newspapers. That was really the intention behind that legislation. So, and the way we have the definition, I would, I would interpret that as excluding those social media pages for very similar purposes, because I would read that statute as narrowly possible as possible, because we want to still maintain our rights to be able to review what's going on, any media that might be reflecting the, the name of our schools and the name of our school district. Whereas for student papers and student yearbooks, we get to put in that disclaimer type of language in there, saying, "this is student-run, and these are the voices of the students." Whereas if it's a Reno High School Instagram page, that really should be controlled by the Reno High School administration, not the students themselves, in my, in my view on that. And also, your question about graduation, if I remember correctly, don't quote me on this, but I believe we have a separate regulation just for graduation.
Yeah, I don't have my phone with me at this moment, but I believe.
I remember looking at that recently, so I'm pretty sure we have that. And I think there was a statute that required us to put in some language related to graduation to allow for religious expression on a graduation attire.
Graduation speech.
Okay, so, sorry, just to clarify, because we're crossing out the social media in the definitions, so that is not going to be in this regulation that...
Oh, it is.
Well, no, it's just in the definitions, it's being deleted. So that's why I'm...
So, well, we were going to delete social media, because it was extraneous, in our opinion, because it wouldn't be included as part of a student publication. And I also, we also want to be very clear, too, that it's very tricky for us to be regulating students' personal social media pages.
No, 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 not their personal, but the ones that they indicate that are related to the school. Because a lot of them have, like, clubs and activities that they create in a social media page, but it has the name of the school on it. So I just, I understand that that may not be under the purview of a publication.
So Neil pointed in, one, it says, "such publications can be hard copy electronic or impaired social media." What I, what I interpret that as, is I've seen schools have their own, like, they do an online newspaper. So that's what I would interpret the student publications for the social media aspect, not Reno High School's actual Instagram page.
Right.
But they have a online newspaper, because they're, you know, coming with the times where everything's now kind of more in web-based print, rather than...
Yeah, and that's what I was just trying to clarify. It's not just general social media that happens to have the school name on it, it's one that's associated with a publication. And that's how we're separating these, right?
Yes, yes.
So then, a policy to regulate speech on, and/or not regulate speech, and anything that's, that's like, puts the school name on it, would need to be different, because this is about, this section's about publications. That's what I guess I'm asking. Sorry, that was a really roundabout way of getting to that.
Yes, and, sorry, I, now I understand your question. Yes, for the student publications definition, that is exactly your, what you, your question is, is yes, what we are regulating is any social media for a student publication. So if, we've been using Reno High School, if Reno High School has an online student newspaper, that would be included in the student publication. However, Reno High School's Instagram page is not considered a student publication.
But what, but if it's like, say, the Reno High School leadership, and the students are running it, does that fall under this?
If they have a leadership page that they run, and I think we have to look at, is it, well, leadership is a class, right? It's a co-curricular class that they get credit for. So I would think that because it's considered a curricular, co-curricular, extracurricular program, that would fall in that.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies my question. Thank you.
I do think the most important part to understand about this is, we are giving, as a state, more rights than the US Supreme Court would. So that makes it a little more difficult. So you have to understand that if certain things pop up, unless we can show it's disruptive to the school environment, there's nothing we can do about it, if it's a student publication under our statute. That's, that makes it difficult for us, as the legal counsel, and for Troy's team to enforce, too, just so everyone understands.
Thank you, President Smith. So my comment, question, page 867, five, religion. I like condensing things, and it is a little uncomfortable for me to pull out one club, but I, having religious clubs, but I think it's important to state where it was taken out. Religious clubs was taken out, and the comparison I'm going to make is, Spanish club is just a given, because we have laws that say there's diversity. LGPQT, because there's laws not to discriminate on sex, sex, gender, and all of that. Religion, on the other hand, has something going against it right out of the bat, and I think it could be misconstrued in a painting with a broad brush by some administrators, separation of church and state, and saying, "no, you can't have a religious club or get-together activity." And so, in just reading this, not to uphold religion more than the others, but there are protections for others, religion, I feel, is not as protected because of the separation of church and state. And me personally, I just would like the one little sentence, "the religious groups shall be given the same access to school facilities and assembling and clubs as other non-curricular groups, without discrimination." I just, because of that separation of church and state, it doesn't have the same protections as other clubs.
I think there's two things to note about that, and I totally respect and appreciate your point. I think you're correct. I mean, that's the law. First of all, A, and Sarah, jump in if you feel you need to, "the district shall not discriminate against students on the basis of religious viewpoint or expression." That actually broadens everything. That's like a big, broad, sweeping statement. So that actually is better than the statement it's attached to. And then down below, with regard to B, keep in mind, this is a student freedom of expression, freedom of speech, and right to assemble policy. An activity and club, that doesn't really fall into any of those. This paragraph belongs better in a REG related to student activities. So this should actually be moved to probably, student activities is going to be in the 5,000 series, AR, I'm guessing here around 50, it would be right around this one, 5,100. It should be in student activities, because that's what it is, right? It's a club, it's an activity. And that's how we define activities. And that's one of the problems with a lot of our policies, is they wander off how they were drafted in the past. Now that we're doing it, this is going to end. But they wander off into topics that aren't related. If I'm a student looking for, can I have my club? Why would I think to look in student freedom of expression, and freedom of speech, and right to assemble? I would look under the club regulation, or the student activities regulation.
And it does say that in the club?
Well, we'll move it. You're asking us to, we'll put it in there. I mean, that's the status of the law, we can do that, and it's a REG, too.
I just would appreciate it because of the separation of church and state, which I agree with.
It's fair.
But I also think it's important for kids, for their social, emotional well-being, to be able to congregate with like-minded thinking and beliefs, and not interfering with anyone else. But I think it's, it's important. Any, any religion, I think it's important that they have that same protected status as the other clubs.
And so, absolutely agree, and I would concur that act, that the nondiscrimination section for expression of religious viewpoint covers that. So they would not be able to ban a religious club. But I will say, over the summer, I reviewed, so we have created a new department of activities, and they have created a manual, and I reviewed their manual. And I can't say with 100% certainty, because it was a couple months ago when I reviewed it, but I am pretty certain that they have a whole section to make sure that there's no discrimination based on religion, and that religious clubs are permitted. And if it's not there, based on your comment, I'm going to go back tomorrow and make sure that it is in there, because that's a manual, that's an easy fix, and I don't think it has been finalized. So they have created a manual now for student activities, because we have expressed in the strategic plan an emphasis on more student activities and involvement. And so they've now created a manual that didn't exist before. And I reviewed it a couple months ago. I'm almost positive that there is a very clear section that you cannot discriminate based on religious clubs, but I'll make sure it's in there.
Would it be possible just to send me a quick email?
Yes, yes.
And update me?
To confirm?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And maybe to the whole board, as a follow-up on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And that's a great point. And so I really just want to call out that, Trustee
Westlake, that's a master class in making sure that different perspectives, different viewpoints, different needs get brought up in a way that has a productive outcome, that really protects everyone. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Vice President Mayberry?
And if I can just add two things. One is, we're going to BCC that to you all, so that we don't start a meeting. And number two is, if Sarah says she's pretty sure she remembers it, she remembers it. She doesn't forget anything. So...
All right, very good. Public comment for this one, JJ?
I don't have anything.
All right. So I will bring it back for a motion with amendments, if that is the mood of the board. Just remember to put in "with the proposed amendments."
With the proposed amendment, thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed amendments to Board Policy 5150, student freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and right to assemble, along with the proposed amendments... along with the proposed amendments and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Westlake. We have a second by trustee Nicolet. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those pose nay. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we're going to rewind to our last item in this section, which is actually item 3.10, Presentation and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval for the Amendment of Board Policy 4500, District Employee Speech and Initiation of the 13-Day Public Review and Comment Period. This is an item for possible action and we will turn it back over to our Chief General Counsel.
Great, thank you again. And we're on Board Policy 4500, District Employee Speech. In this one, we want to replace the current policy, which is found as Attachment B, with the new policy. That's Attachment A. We have one amendment to the new policy at the, I think it's a, I don't, it's a slight change in the purpose statement. Instead of it saying is permitted to impose, we're going to suggest is permitted to place reasonable limitations on employee speech. Beyond that, this policy, as we just talked about with student speech, employee speech is constantly changing. And so it's very, very difficult to draft a policy without us constantly having to come back here. We thought that this struck a pretty nice position between balanced governance. You know, it's the board saying, hey, you superintendent, we want you to adopt regs that address all of these different types of speech. The problem with the current policy, just quite frankly, it misstates things. It misstates the law on, for example, hostile work environment. Kevin, by the way, sorry, everyone, General Counsel of Labor is with us, Kevin Pick. And he, he and I worked on this together. And so we, we have to change Board Policy 4500 as it exists today. It's got to get done. It's been put off for too long. It's the one policy that we haven't touched and we need to do it. The current policy does a lot of extraneous things such as we don't need to cite the First Amendment. It doesn't matter that we cite the First Amendment. It is what it is. So we're not changing it. We don't need to cite the free speech clause for the Nevada Constitution. Because again, no offense to all of you, I think you're great. It doesn't matter what you think. It is what it is. So those aren't part of our board policies. We have to comply with those things regardless. So, so that, those are some of the features, for lack of a better phrase, that you'll find in the old Board Policy 4500. If you notice, this is the only policy that's in the old format. You know, unfortunately, we tried to change this many times and it got hung up. I know trustee Nicolet was there with me. This was her first go-around. It got hung up in politics. It's time to set that aside and, and get a true policy that truly addresses employee speech and, and protects our employees and protects the district. And that's really what we're trying to do here. So we really like the policy and I'm going to just turn it over to Kevin to add any of his thoughts.
Hi, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, Trustees, General Counsel Kevin Pick. I just wanted to add a couple of things. When you look at the original policy, the old policy, I'll call it, it was really split into two sections. There was a guiding principles section and then there was a guiding practices section. And all the policies I reviewed, I never saw a guiding practices section. It's a reg. And so what this was, is we looked at this and it's cleanup. There's a, a policy section and it also included a, an AR section. And so what we did is we took the AR section out of here and put it in an actual AR that would accompany this that goes into these various details, the different nine categories here. And so we tried to stick with the practices section that was already in here. That went into an AR. And, and then we tried to stick with the guiding principles to boil down what was already in the old reg and put it into a succinct, obviously pared-down version of it. The original guiding principles section was literally just a bunch of recitations of what the law actually required anyways. Literally it quotes, like Chief General Counsel Lombardo said, it quotes the First Amendment. It quotes the Nevada Constitution. It quotes the legal standards. Maybe not in a way I would desire or that are updated to fit current case law. And it requires legal definitions. And so there's not a lot of actual policy in the guiding principles section as it currently exists. And so it's literally just a bunch of legal definitions that are somewhat outdated. And it's not, you know, I was in the back, I listened very much to President Smith. There was not the creating the what in this. It was literally just a bunch of outdated definitions. And so this was our attempt to revise it, to cast aside what the law requires because there's no reason to put legal definitions that do change in a guiding principle section and, and to make it more succinct to, to meet the vision of what a policy statement really should be. So, thank you.
And let me add just one more thing. Sorry, President Smith, if I may. If you look at the purpose statement and Kevin, excuse me, Mr. Pick pointed this out to me. Sorry for being so informal. I'm just trying to get going here. So. He pointed this out to me though. It, it, it does cite what the law is in a very nice, succinct paragraph. This paragraph under purpose is literally the US Supreme Court's rulings on public employees' First Amendment rights to, to, First Amendment rights as it relates to their employment. So what we have here is employees can speak on issues of public concern when doing so in their personal or individual capacity. So you can't as, I can't as Neil Lombardo, Chief General Counsel, speak out on an issue of public concern. But when I walk out that door and I take off this name badge and this tie and I'm kicking it in my flip flops, I can say whatever I want, right? So that's, that's where the line is. That's kind of what that's, that's, not kind of, that's what that's saying. And then what it says, in specific circumstances, however, the district is permitted to place reasonable limitations on employee speech, even when speech is related to school system and its programs. So what that's talking about, that's a case out of, that's Garcetti, right? Where, where what the US Supreme Court said is in certain circumstances, even if you're speaking about a public concern, but it relates to your employment and you're doing so as an employee, that's not protected speech. And so that's what that's referring to. So it's a really, I'll just leave it there. I don't want to keep going and bore you all to death about United States Supreme Court case law. But this is a pretty nice summation of where it's at. I know that President Smith has some concerns and, but that's, that's, I just want to point those features out.
Yeah, and I appreciate that and I, I will, I will get to that because I have never, I don't, I'll just pause. Vice President Mayberry followed by trustee Westlake.
Okay. God bless America. Freedom of speech. Yeah, you know, I, this one, it, it, and just, I'm, I'm struggling too and maybe you can help me. Because when, when I read, I, I understand the guiding principles. You know, there's a lot of colorful language in there, a lot of flowery, flowery language. It seems to be helpful. I, I guess, you know, if, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And maybe it is broke. I, I don't know. It, it, but more importantly, when I read the new, when I read the new policy, you know, it's, it says, Board hereby direct Superintendent to appropriate administrative regulations, implement and maintain the purposes of Board Policy. I, I don't know, help me. I almost feel like this board is usurping its authority in, in terms of defining the, the, the policy with respect to all of these. Does that make sense?
It, it does. I don't want to cut you off, but just a plus one U for one response. And I know trustee Westlake, so remember fundamentally, Board Policy is the what, administration is the how. Out of fairness to any superintendent, I do not know how any superintendent would look at this and say, I know how to implement this because we have not given enough what. Now, I am not suggesting it needs to be as voluminous as the previous policy. But the entire policy is here superintendent develop these admin regs and there is literally nothing under the policy that is the what. Now, unlike my other comments, I don't have specific changes here. My, my intention would be for us to have a conversation and this to potentially come back. But there is just, I, I do like the purpose, but unlike everything else we've looked at, the entire policy is here superintendent create an admin reg, which does have a comment period, but it doesn't come back to the board. We don't vote on it and ultimately it's the superintendent's discretion. And I don't know how a superintendent would create an admin reg when we have not given any of the what. So it's too pared down, but I agree that a change is needed from the previous version. But this is, this is like too much of a diet for me. I realize that's more of a statement than a question, but I figured rather than just do it third, I would just do it after Vice President Mayberry.
Well, this is like Tab soda, right? Remember Tab? Okay. So here would be my, our, I think our answers and I know Kevin might want to weigh in. I'm just going to go with informal, sorry. First of all, it's not broke. Why fix it? It is broke. It's just dead wrong in spots, the current policy. Let me point just a couple of things out real quick. Paragraph E, what does that even say? The district encourages the genuine discussion of issues or use of materials for legitimate academic, educational or instructional purposes. That's a non, that's a, how does that deal with First Amendment of employees? It's, it's, it's not, it's a non sequitur. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't fit in here. It's a curriculum issue and that should be covered in a regulation. Curriculum is adopted by the superintendent ultimately. Some curriculum you control, I get that, but let's just speak in generalizations. And, and so that's how you would manage that situation. That paragraph means nothing. Staff are encouraged to use appropriate internal channels regarding supervisory or administrative concerns. We already have a staff complaint process. Why does that need to be in here? Paragraph I, the district recognizes the powerful impact of communication through social media. The participation and sharing by staff through social media can be a beneficial tool to faculty and students when used, when used reasonably and safely. The use of social, that's a regulation. That's not a policy. That's a regulation related to social media. Let's look at 2A, district employees do not shed their constitutional right to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse door. And then it cites to Tinker. Tinker doesn't even discuss employees. Tinker only deals with students. It's just a dead wrong cite to the law. I mean, the one thing I'm thankful of, this was done before I was here, before Sarah was here, we're the longest two. So we had nothing to do with this. But this, I mean, if, I, I can keep going, but it is broken. And I, I won't except to point out that somewhere in here, and Kevin and I just talked about it before I came up, was, and maybe you have it at your fingertips, but the hostile work environment site is literally, he was reading it to me. Do you have that? Well, go ahead. You can go jump in.
And then I'll come back to the diet.
It's on page three, right there, under section IV. It's in the middle of the paragraph, talks about generally a hostile work environment is this when employee experiences workplace harassment and fears going to work because of offensive, intimidating or oppressive atmosphere generated by the harasser. I'll just say that it's not even close to the actual legal definition of hostile work environment. How Title VII or any of the other titles actually describes it. So that is just wrong.
Yeah, and I don't disagree that the original policy needs to be amended. I actually don't have a problem with us completely recreating it. But if we made all the changes that we were bringing up to this point, it's the same thing I was advocating for. We don't have a what that is actually okay. The entire policy is just that the superintendent will create an admin reg. So I don't suggest that the original isn't broken. I agree that it is. But I need to at least see a policy that is, is what. It is what this board actually believes in, which isn't just here superintendent create admin regs. I don't, but this one, I, I feel needs more work. It just, it just does. But I don't disagree that the old policy needs to be significantly amended. I just can't move forward with a policy where I don't see any what in it. So, but, but I'll pause on that because I, sorry, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, if I can jump in, I really do appreciate it. These are your board policies. And so I fully understand and if, if it's the will of the board to revise the policy, I'm happy to write it in a way that will meet what your intent is. Absolutely happy to do that. That's not a problem. This is a little bit different of a policy than maybe some of the others. This is not a cell phone policy or a curriculum policy. This is a free speech policy. And literally it deals with a legal issue. The what is already in the law. The what is described in the law. And so that's, it's a little bit of a different policy naturally than some of the others because it does deal with inherently only a legal issue. What is free speech in the employment context? And so the actual, you know, the what and the how really is directed only by the law. And so it's, it is maybe a little bit different than some of the other board policies we've been talking about.
Yeah, we tried to strike that balance to, to Kevin's point by the purpose statement because the purpose statement outlines the law. And so that was the balance we were trying to strike. And, but Kevin's absolutely right. If you guys want it redone, we can, we can, we'll have to figure out how to fix it. I do also want to address one thing and I do appreciate President Smith's point about if she was a superintendent, she wouldn't know how to draft the reg. Every one of those is actually, a lot of that does come from the old policy and it's addressed in there. We would, I feel, do it better in the new reg. But every single one of those issues has case laws attached to it. So that's what we would just put in the reg. And the reason why we feel like it's better in the reg is every single one of those issues is going to change. And so instead of, again, constantly coming back to you with policies, if we have it in the regulations, it's easier to go through that process. You know, Superintendent Ernst, we get him to change it. He puts it out for public comment. Two weeks later, we look at the public comment and then we adopt it or we change it based on the public comment. So totally respect where you're coming from. Let us know, you know, whatever you want. But that was our thoughts on the what and, and how the reg would be drafted.
Thank you, President Smith, and thank you both so much. I mean, you guys have already done a ton of work. Your department's done a ton of work. I personally, I can only speak for myself. I feel that all of our policies already have to incorporate law and N R S. And so I'm just, I'm having a little difficulty seeing why we can't incorporate N R S into the policy we already have and strike out. I mean, there's red all over all the other policies that doesn't apply anymore, outdated, doesn't follow N R S. And freedom of speech, to me, does not change that much. And I'm looking at one through nine, what you're saying is taken out of the old policy. But it may be superfluous. It may not have the, the legal attached to it. So I personally would just like to see the other policy handled the same way that the other ones were, but making sure that the N R S is applied. And I'm looking at one and that is very glaring to me. I just, two, violent harassing. We don't want to incite. We don't want to discriminate. We don't want a, a teacher going out. Republicans suck. Democrats are wonderful. We don't want them diverging a lot from the approved curriculum because it's there for a reason, so that we have, you know, consistent outcomes. Student instruction related to controversial issues. We, we, we want that to be handled in, in a respectful way. We don't want the teacher starting World War III in the classroom. Employee use of personal social media, that one definitely. And I've had some experience with that lately. Employee use of, okay, publication activities that appear to represent the district, of course. We don't want the district bashed in things. Employee religious expression, again, I will say that the classroom is not, because it's going to make some students uncomfortable. So yes, a lot of these are just no brainers. Employee patriotic observances, the ones that, that, that dang state observes. I mean, you don't go off and have, you know, some country's day of whatever and we're going to celebrate in the classroom, unless you're doing a section on other countries. And I can understand that because you cover everything with them, their, their patriotism, their food culture, blah, blah, blah. But one, when employee speech may be reasonably regulated, what the heck is that? That is just so broad and the interpretation is all over the place for that. That, that is, to me, a, a red flag there. That is, I, I don't even understand what we're doing there. I, I just don't.
Well, well, don't forget, it would be in a regulation which would define it more. But basically, as an employee, you can't disrupt the work environment. You can't disrupt the school environment.
But that can be said in the, in the policy.
Well, again, if, well.
It's never going to be okay. It's never gonna be okay to disrupt the work environment. Whenever, when do we think it's ever gonna be okay to disrupt the work environment? It's just not. It's not appreciated. It's, it's not productive. So I don't see freedom of speech suddenly changing, saying, yeah, and it's okay to go in there and just raise holy hell in the classroom and in the hallways and just shut the whole school down. I, I just, you guys, I'm just not seeing that. I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing that.
What's disruptive to you may not be disruptive to me or vice versa, and that's why you have to have a regulations to explain that.
Why can't we have a policy explaining that?
Because the policy tells the what. We want to have employee free speech with these limitations.
So how the policy without?
And that's the why, which is the limitations goes in the regulation.
Then I would like to see the policy outlining that and then the regulation regulating it, I guess is what I'm saying. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable without seeing the policy. This, this is just like bones. There's, there's no flesh, skin, eyeballs. There's nothing here.
Thank you, Trustee Westlake. We appreciate your input. We'll definitely take that into consideration as we're continuing through on the conversation.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I will say that, as you mentioned, I was, um, way back when, part of discussing this, and this has always been a tough issue for all the right reasons. Um, I think you already know I am a fan of less is best. Two pages. Thank you, thank you. You are amazing. I will tell you, I believe that this is a beautiful combination of the why, which is really what we should be doing, is the why. The what and the how are up to our only real employee in that is the superintendent. And the superintendent works with all the experts that surround him to come up with exactly how you implement this. These, I think these nine, um, I, I guess I would call them tenants are beautifully stated. I think that they give good direction to the superintendent, which is, which is absolutely what it should be. We have the why right out of the purpose. Why? Because we acknowledge the right of Washoe County School District employees to speak on issues of public concern when doing so in, in their personal and individual capacity. That's absolutely beautiful. I personally didn't like the word impose. Thank you for replacing that with the word is permitted to place reasonable limitations. Again, and then the policy part of it is really the how. The superintendent, we're telling you superintendent that you need to make this happen, um, through this policy. And then the what is the administrative regulations and then, of course, the administrative, um, procedures. So I personally think this is absolutely beautiful and I commend you. One page is, this is a miracle. And thank you for that.
Um, JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
The board received an email from Kalen Evans.
Um, I will just add, I, we are literally always taught that the policy is the what and the admin. I can't deviate from that on this one. I can't. To say that we have for one policy, all of a sudden it's only the why. I mean, we literally say all the time, board policies are the what, admin regulation is the how. I can't deviate on that for this policy, even with the, you know, recommendation that we got or the, the overview was that, you know, board policies inform the public and provide guidance. Um, and then the admin regulations provide information to the community on the superintendent's implementation and the board policies are broad statements of intent. Like I, I just don't see that here. And I can't create a one-off for this policy. I can't say for one policy out of all of them that we're gonna only worry about the why when we literally, for all my four years of being a trustee, have said policies are the what and admin regulations are the how. But I, but I understand that. It's just, I, I can't abdicate the what on this one. Um, but that's okay. We'll, we'll see where a vote of the board goes and we can talk about the different options that that could be. Uh, Trustee Phoenix?
Oh, just to weigh in on it, uh, again, thank you for the overview about with the purpose straight from the law there. And that's how I read it, is how Diane said it. She had, uh, the why and then the listing of, of all, each and every one of those. I find that if it's gonna be carried out and the superintendent's gonna actually administratively put that on record for them to do, that's the guidance and direction they're gonna get. I think that it's okay to have this. I think we're used to seeing maybe a lot of other stuff, per NRS, this, that. Maybe if you even put in there like, you know, per, uh, the law, it says blah, 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 somewhere in the purpose, something like that, maybe. And, but the policy there, I really do like that you have it listed out. It's just, it's easy to follow and, and I, I'm, I like this, actually.
So we've had great discussion. There's a couple, there's actually, you know, many different directions that we could go. Just like with everything else, we can, someone can make a motion to adopt it as it is. It sounds like that there's some favor towards that. Um, we can also send the policy back to the superintendent, uh, based on the feedback to come back with more substance or what to the policy, um, or, or not. We just don't even advance anything. So there's multiple different options, uh, but we do have to move towards some sort of, um, an action. Trustee Hall?
Um, I, I just wanna maybe pull this together just a little bit in that, that the original policy is all over the place and I totally agree with that, like quoting tinker, which that is a totally misquote. And I know all my, my legal friends over here, I, if I had a student do that, I would like just cry. Um, so I agree that it needed to be changed, but I also don't feel like it's striking a balance when I look at all of our other policy documents. And I can really appreciate that this one in particular is guided by a lot of legal precedent. And so that makes it difficult to put it into policy. I, I can really appreciate where that's coming from, but it doesn't feel like there's any, anything substantive in the policy. And I think that's where it feels uncomfortable because all of the other policies have something substantive in them, which might be why the previous policy randomly brought in case law that doesn't apply. Um, so I'm, I'm just, I guess where, where I, I feel like, it feels like we're standing is that this doesn't feel finished enough for us to put it into the public. Um, it feels like there's, there's some additional conversations that need to happen in order to make this mirror our other policies as best as possible, again, because there's so much legal precedent around it that we don't have control over a lot of this anyway as it stands. So that, that's kind of what I'm pulling from all of our.
Are you moving?
Well, I, I would, I guess I would move that we, I don't know how I say this, but I, I move that we continue this conversation and, and return it back to the, I don't know how I say that, sorry.
Um, it, it depends on the intent, but, um, and you tell me, so I'm just trying to listen. An option would be that you move to send the policy back to the superintendent for revision based on feedback from the board or something along those lines.
Thank you, yeah, sorry, starting to get, so moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Trustee Hall and Trustee Westlake to send the policy back to the superintendent, um, for additional revision based on conversation from the board. That's a fairly accurate recount of it, all right? Um, so we'll see where it goes. This is why the magic happens in real time. Um, I don't see any lights on, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion carries four to two. Thank you very much. And thank you, team. This is a great conversation. Um, and I, I'm really proud of us for having it as well, too. And everyone was right because there's many, many facets to this. So everyone is absolutely right, um, in their view of it. And then we'll see what comes next. All right, that closes item 3.10 and closes section three in its entirety. And we'll now open section four, our reports, uh, beginning with, as we talked about, maybe this is why we're gonna keep it at three minutes. Uh, item 4.01, our board reports. Um, Trustee Phoenix, would you like to kick us off?
Sure thing. Thank you very much. Have a nice night. I'm just kidding. Uh, no, I went to the, the Dean's Future Scholar. Uh, what I really liked about it is that, uh, you know, it's targeted for a certain, uh, community and that first generation college, it's been around for a minute and that, uh, I'll shout out to all the teachers that are going out there and doing it, uh, on their own time. And, uh, I, I really did appreciate them walking us through that whole, uh, that whole thing, seeing all from the, from the younger generation moving up, so how that program has developed over the years and that, uh, they get to come back. So that was a big takeaway for me, uh, going to this one, and that was the only thing that I have from my report, so thanks.
All right, well, um, during this break, um, I was doing my other job, which was around a lot of teachers. But, um, my report is that in the upcoming weeks, we have the beginning of school and I just, um, have to say I am most excited about meeting all the new teachers next week and speaking to them. So I just wanna give a shout out to anyone who is joining our school district, that we are really excited to have you, um, starting this school year with us. So that's all I have today.
I have some photos, but I too, too, want to say I'm really excited to get back into the, into the schools and see the kiddos and the teachers and the administrators. And I know this is gonna be a fabulous, a fabulous year, so looking forward to it. Fill the bus. So I want to give a shout out to Reno Fire. There's gonna be a picture of the fire truck. Especially to my son Brock Westlake. And Mo Carter, I got to see him again. He was, he also coached at Reed High School Football and I haven't seen him for a while. Alice, 96.5, the other radio station that was covering these events, um, couldn't do it anymore. Alice stepped right in and just ran with it. Communities and school, they're filling the bus with supplies for kids, needed things, helping teachers stock their classrooms. They do amazing, amazing work and I appreciate, I appreciate them so much, so much. Um, what's next?
Oh.
Oh, okay, well, I'll go on to, I don't think I have a picture with, uh, I don't have a picture with Dean's Future Scholars, so stay on there if you would, please, JJ. I'll come back to that. Dean's Future Scholars, again, Commissioner Mary Lou Garcia was very gracious to take us and walk through UNR and go through what they are doing with these kids. And how cool is it for these kids to be on the UNR campus? I mean, it is just invigorating. We the people, with my colleague and my very good friend here, Christine, in her other hat, I'm in love with this program. I went up where the teachers were doing a workshop and, uh, I got to be a judge and my husband, I dragged my husband up there. I didn't tell him he was gonna be a judge. I waited till we got there and he's like, I'm gonna be a judge. And I'm like, yes. And he goes, did you keep that a secret? And I'm like, well, yeah, would you have come? Hello? But amazing things they're doing. We were developing, uh, Reno Commerce Magazine, talking about the, the hidden gems, Ni County, this Humboldt County, the smaller counties and what they have to offer people that come to those counties and what they can see, what they can partake in. And they, we decided, we couldn't just have one as the winner. We decided it was gonna be hidden.
Hidden minerals.
Hidden minerals. And I said, hidden mineral gems. I mean, they, and they only had like an hour to pull this together. It was insane. I mean, these teachers are amazing. I just, I, and you're amazing. I just wanted, this whole program is amazing. So thank you. Thank you, JJ. You did awesome with the pictures. That JJ, not JJP. Sorry.
Oh, thank you. I'll be brief. Um, yeah, looking forward, good to be back and, um, looking forward to new school year. I, I do want to thank Superintendent, uh, and, and his office and, uh, the, uh, Chief Baker, uh, for your, your work on the, uh, the Reno High incident and the partnership you have with, uh, District Attorney Hicks, uh, and, and how that is, uh, has moved forward. I, uh, was very, very gratified to, to see that, uh, there'll be some accountability, it looks like anyways. And, uh, I'm, again, hats off to, uh, our District Attorney and, uh, and to you and our, our law enforcement offices here. So thank you, sir.
I'm gonna give a few numbers to Dean's Future Scholars. There were 411 students, grade seven through 12, from 39 different schools. And I thought this was kind of interesting. There were, uh, 3,962 in-person contact with these students by the college student mentors. They started a new program, Dean's Future Scholars, an Early Childhood Pathway Program. They'll earn two free college courses, HDFS 201 and 202, that's Human Development Family Studies. And they will have paid internship opportunities at local early childhood centers. Whoop, whoop. I visited the new building, the addition at Mariposa Language and Learning, Learning Academy. When you get a chance, please do, um, making good things happen for students in Washoe County School District. I attended the SMART, I'd never heard of this, the Start SMART Academy Awards, which is hosted by the Reno Housing Authority. Basically, it provides youth with leadership development, academic and social growth and financial literacy and coli, career exploration. And I gotta tell you, these students were also at this awards dinner and they were the best part of it. It was absolutely wonderful. As part of my service on Early Childhood Advisory Council, um, I wanted to share that there's a new program coming and it's very exciting. And it's called the Early Childhood Coordinated Intake Referral System. And basically, it's a, it's a vision that's being developed to have a user-friendly, bi-directional platform linking families to the right services at the right time. And, and this is, this is very monumental because what we're doing is we have so many wonderful services, now we're gonna coordinate them. Yes, to the best of our ability. There's always some outliers, they do their own thing. Bravo, this is America. But we're gonna try and bring together the resources that parents need at the time they need them. So why are we doing this? For access, efficiency, for coordination, reduce duplication, and then, of course, efficacy. Fill the bus, bravo. Yes, I attended one. It's the, the work that they do and they have so much fun. Um, it was, it was really a wonderful experience. And, uh, bada bing, there you go.
All right, I'm gonna, they're good as, this is gonna sound very familiar to everyone else, so I'm gonna wait for JJ to get the pictures up before I start. I only have one. Fill the bus. Communities and schools fill the bus. I couldn't be there on the finale day, so I met, um, the absolutely wonderful Nicole Willis-Grimes, um, at Reno Fire Station. My kids and I dropped off a whole bunch of items to help with that initiative. That's why I was so glad to see that we're expanding into more WCSD schools. Um, and a special shout out and appreciation for strengthening our community. Um, I know that they've played a really big role in that. So just really excited to see our community gathering around all of our kids to make sure that they have the items that they need. Um, also met with Superintendent Ernst and I, met with, uh, new TMCC President, Dr. Alexander. We also had a very, very productive and important conversation with many members of the Jewish Nevada Coalition. Um, I also want to echo Vice President Mayberry's comments about accountability and the community action around Reno High School and very, very grateful for that. Um, fun fact, does everybody know that our, uh, school police department also fought a fire out in front of our building over by the Eastman's? They have been busy. We tip our hat to you. And I can't remember if I had mentioned it or not, uh, but I had also attended the, um, Fit for Attendants at Bill Pierce Courtesy Honda. So all seniors that attend school, and I'm plugging this 'cause I hope that all of our principals mention this right at the beginning of school, because all you have to do is attend school your senior year, all of your days, and then you could be entered to win a car. And so thank you so much to Sandy Raffelli and congratulations to Jackson Carpenter of Galena High School for winning that car. All right, team, that closes item 4.01. And by the way, I think that's a record for as much time as I left on the clock for that. And, uh, I'll now open item 4.02, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Smith. Um, really, I'll keep it concise. We are gearing up and looking forward to the school year ahead. Our team has been doing a lot of work over the summer and we can't wait to see our students and families on the and families on the first day of school.
This is, this is an easy crowd today, so we get, you know, punchy. That closes section four, and we move on now to our fifth and final section, closing items, beginning with item 5.01, public comment. JJ, who are we welcoming?
I have no cards.
Oh, man. Okay, well, then that closes item 5.01. And item 5.02, our next meeting announcement, is August 12, 2025, the second day of the regular school year for most of our schools, not all, because kindergartners and inclines start later. And now that brings me to item 5.03, 6:23 PM adjournment. Thank you so much.